... but he was the head of...
Excuse me, could everyone please take your seats? Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of October 5th, 2021 is now called to order. The time is 6:01 PM. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district district mission, I'm sorry, vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes invocation, presentation of colors, and the Pledge of Allegiance, acknowledgements, public comments, consent action items, which include eight on, eight items under academic services, five items under business services, one item under human resources, five items under operations, two items under public hearing, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Ms. Vaughn?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. It has been moved by Ms. Vaughn and seconded by Ms. Morgan. Please record your votes. Okay, uh, seven zero, motion carries. Mrs. Gittens will introduce her guests for the invocation, after which Ms. Patrica will lead us in the presentation of the color and the pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Gittens, please introduce your guest.
Yes, um, good evening. Pastor Gregory Ford is a native of Naples, Florida. He's been married for 33 years with his lovely wife, I can attest to that, and partner in the ministry, Pastor Marjorie Ford, and together they have labored in the gospel for 31 years. They proudly have four children and six grandchildren. Pastor Ford has a master's degree in theology and is an ordained minister in the assemblies of God. He is currently the campus lead pastor for First Assembly Cornerstone in Fort Myers, where he has served for the past 17 years. Pastor Ford has authored and published two books, From No Man to God's Man, which is his personal life story, and Get to the Point, A Life and Ministry Instructional Guide. Under his leadership, Pastor Ford and First Assembly Cornerstone has been a community hub and beacon of light and hope to the families in Lee County. Thank you for giving the invocation, Pastor Ford. Can you all please stand?
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, giver of all good gifts, we come together this moment in prayer requesting your wisdom, your guidance, and most of all, your peace to rest upon us as we proceed in tonight's meeting. Let everything that be done, Lord, let it be done in decency and in order. Grant this board the insight to lead with integrity, that every decision that is made tonight will reflect your goodwill and the good of the people. Help us all, Lord God, to make decisions whose ultimate aim is for the good of all the students, the staff, and the community. May your will be done tonight. For these and all of the blessings, we ask, in your holy name we pray. Let everyone say, "Amen."
Ms. Patrica, please lead us in the presentation of the color and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Introducing the cadet who is presenting the national colors for our Pledge of Allegiance tonight is Sergeant Major James Hooverner, Army instructor from Cape Coral High School. Sergeant Major Hooverner served 36 years in the Army in numerous challenging assignments and retired as a sergeant major. This is Sergeant Major Hooverner's third year as a ROTC instructor in the district. Sergeant Major, I'd like to thank you for your service to our great nation.
Thank you, ma'am. Presenting the national colors tonight is Cadet Matthew Parker, the Cadet Commander of the Cape Coral High School Junior ROTC Program. Cadet Parker is on the Cape Coral Junior ROTC Drill, Exhibition Drill, Color Guard, and Raider Teams. He is actively participating in all junior ROTC events and is competing at the state level for Exhibition Drill. Upon graduation, Cadet Parker has the desire to attend the highly prestigious United States Military Academy at West Point. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Pastor Ford, thank you very much. The character word for October is "respect others." Quote, "Respect others and others will respect you," Confucius. The design you see displayed on the screen was created by Kate Mackey, an 11th grade student at Astero High School. Acknowledgements for the month are as listed: Disability History Awareness Week, National School Lunch Week, National School Bus Safety Week, National Red Ribbon Week. Uh, next on the agenda item is public comment. And before Ms. DePree Bruno addresses the, um, the public, uh, tonight, we do, if there is a need for a interpreter, we do have one, uh, that would be available for those who may need one. Uh, Ms. DePree Bruno, if you would please address the...
Good evening and thank you, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided in the back. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff in the hallway outside of the boardroom. The rules concerning public comment are posted and will be made from the microphone in the back of the room. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on school district issues. Personal attacks on individuals or abusive language are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud, and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or display of temper are prohibited. Speakers may not address board members by name and personal attacks against individual board members. The board as a whole, the superintendent, or district staff are prohibited. There is a process if you have an allegation or a charge that you would like to bring forth, which is found in Board Policy 1.11 Subsection 6B. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning, and we ask that you govern yourself accordingly. We will take recesses as necessary if there is not decorum in the chambers. Please remember that it is unlawful and a second-degree misdemeanor to knowingly disrupt or interfere with a school board meeting. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20, two minutes if there are 30, and one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, 60 speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. We encourage you to address the board as a whole versus individual board members as they act as a collective board. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call you, five speakers at a time. Please follow the staff's direction when lining up. Madam Chair, we have 33 speakers this evening. That would be, uh, one minute per speaker.
Thank you, Ms. DePree Bruno. So, I'm sorry, sir, uh, there's some speaking back and forth. Thank you. Uh, please make sure that you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located with the staff in the hallway. In addition, if there is not decorum during this meeting, I will call for a five-minute recess. We will continue to recess this meeting as needed, increasing five minutes each time. Members of the dais, when a recess is called, I ask that you leave the chamber. Of course, it goes without saying that during the recess, board members will not discuss any matter that is pending on the agenda or will cut before this body to avoid any sunshine violations. I will reiterate what Ms. DePree Bruno just said, in that it is unlawful and a second-degree misdemeanor to knowingly disrupt or interfere with a school board meeting. We would appreciate it if you would state your name prior to making your comment. Uh, is there anyone, uh, who wishes to address the board who has not filled out the comment card, uh, in the room? Okay. Uh, Ms. DePree Bruno, uh, please proceed with the public comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Will the following individuals please line up? Ally Locke, Frances Haas, Corstah Ben, Tara Jenner, Dr. Constance Shipman. Before we, before we start, if one of the interpreters wouldn't mind reading the statement for me that I read in terms of the, um, public comment in Spanish, I would appreciate that.
Is this mic on? Yes.
You can make it fix it so you can, you don't have to bend down.
Would you like to do it in English first?
Um, well, I was talking about the, I got a request to have the public comment statement that I just read translated in Spanish.
Got you.
Okay.
Ms. DePree Bruno?
Okay. All right. Well, the first speaker, I think that's Ms. Locke, you may, when the timer comes up, you may go ahead and begin.
Hello, my name is Frances Haas, and I am a Lee County resident, a parent of two form, two current and one former Lee County District School students. I am here again to talk about the COVID-19 pandemic. The last two meetings, I was telling you the story of my brother-in-law, Tate Walters, who was a former teacher with the Lee County School District. He began exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19 about two weeks after the beginning of this school year, and six days ago, he passed away due to COVID-19. I would ask every board member to please do a moral reflection and come up with a threshold for the number of bodies you are able to tolerate. The number of orphaned children, the number of widows, the number of grieving family members, that is tolerable to this board? And just let us know what it is, because this is devastating. I've been working in the COVID unit since the beginning of the pandemic, and it is exhausting. Thank you.
Speaker, please.
Yeah, I'll just get down low.
You, you can adjust that, sir.
Sorry, this is my first time.
You're fine. There you go.
Hi, I am Carsten Branch. I am a student at Cypress Lake High School. I would like to thank all of you for what you do for the students in Lee County. I have the best principal in the county, Mrs. Rolls. I went to her about the bathrooms, and she told me that she has submitted it for many years. And I know they need to be remodeled. I would kindly like to ask for you to take a look at the bathrooms at Cypress Lake High School, especially the ones at the football field and in the west wing. Since it is the second oldest school in, since it is the second oldest school in Lee County, you can imagine the need for a bathroom remodel. And I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to have a child right now, but if I did, I wouldn't want my child to be going in those bathrooms. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Excuse me, ma'am, if you can go on the other side of the station, we don't want anyone behind the speakers. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ally Locke. Bienvenidos a nuestros amigos de Guatemala. Mi nombre es señor Locke y soy maestra en el distrito. Um, I'm here tonight to ask you to please take the masks off of our teachers. Um, throughout the night and every board meeting, I see you all pulling down your mask and adjusting them when you're speaking, and I feel for you. Please imagine having to do that for eight hours while we're at school trying to teach our kids. Uh, will you, the mask mandate was just renewed for teachers this week without any guidelines as for when it is going to come off. And a lot of us are scared to sign that MOU tomorrow because we're afraid that they'll never come off. So I ask you to please do the right thing and take them off of us. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Dr. Edward Drass, Danielle Frances Cook, Simone Susho, Ginwata Alvarez, Dr. Iris Ramirez.
You may start when you're ready.
Greetings to the Lee County School Board and each and every one that is here. My name is Doctor Constance Shipman, and I am an employee of the Transportation Department, and my title is bus attendant. My concerns are, when we are on the bus, we have some children that have different behaviors, and those behaviors will cause them to scratch, kick, bite, even spit. And the projectile for the spit, there's no protection for the other children or for myself or the bus driver. Now with COVID going on, and my grandson is a student in middle school, he received and contacted COVID from another student. Thus, it was taken to my daughter, who already had enough problems. I thank God that they're both alive and they're doing well. But there needs to be some protection.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Tara Jenner. When the natural rights of the US and, uh, our natural rights protected by the US and state constitutions are abridged, it's the duty of the people to speak up. Then Franklin wrote in part in Do Good Letter Number Eight, that men ought to speak well of their governors is true, while their governors deserve to be well-spoken of, but to do public mischief without hearing of it is only the prerogative and felicity of tyranny. Um, in short, those who are acting righteously should have nothing to fear from free speech, only those who are treacherous fear it. Without free speech and the right to redress the actions of those in elected positions, we are not free. Repercussions such as removal and threats of arrest further silence the rights of the people and cause a chilling effect, as is evidenced by Board Policy 1.11. The challenge to the board also is to recognize that any money that's received from the federal government as free comes with strings that are shaped like handcuffs. Say no to this grant.
And Chris Patrica? Excuse me, ma'am, time is up. Next speaker, please.
Dr. Edward Drass. I don't do theatrics. I have no yellow hazmat suit. COVID is waning. Mask mandates are no longer a distraction. Children are not dying. Open up this room to the public and get back to the important task of running the school district. Dr. Savage, you're doing an excellent job. I support you, and most people in this community do as well. Board members, stop conspiring against him and work with him for the district's common good. Some of you are working with higher-ups in the FSBA and Teachers Union to push social agendas that are extremely unpopular. Stop scheming to undermine parents in the community. To quote a, a recent guest opinion, choose a leader who will invest in building bridges, not walls, books, not weapons, morality, not corruption, intellectualism and wisdom, not ignorance. One of these board members does not exemplify any of those qualities.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Daniel Frances Cook for the record. I'd like to make a formal public records request, actually, of each of the board members' oath of office. I wonder if that's possible, if I could follow up with somebody on the staff to get a written copy of each board member's oath of office. And I think that's important, because I see many men and women in uniform today. All politicians swear an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution for the United States of America as well as the Florida Constitution. I know that in Article One, Section Five of the Florida Constitution, it says that the people have the right to peaceably assemble, which this tape on the seats is a violation of. We have a right to instruct our representatives, which is what these petitions are, calling for a resignation. And then we also have the right, I think we have the right to be heard regarding these petitions. So I'll follow up with whoever I need to about the oaths of office of all the board members. Thank you.
Hello? Okay, Jennifer Wada Alvarez, I have a child in Lee County, two of them actually, and I'm here actually to speak to the public and not to the board. Um, I am an activist for Lee County. I, a couple weeks ago, I went to a, a nonprofit called Florida Citizens Alliance, okay? Uh, they're, uh, they've been working with the educators of Florida and the legislators, okay? And the last five years, Lee County has been on their radar, okay? I moved here 15 years ago, A-rated school, okay? Now to learn, as of 19, it is a B, borderline B, which probably since COVID, it is now a C-rated school academically, God, people, okay? Also, to learn that when they graduate Lee County schools, 48% of them, they cannot, uh, have, uh, reading proficiency.
You're out of order. I need you to lower your voice, please. Thank you.
52% means they cannot read, and they don't have reading proficiency when they graduate Lee County, okay? This is what's going on last five years with this board, people. We need to wake up, and people will wake up, okay? Also, math proficiency, 39%, 39% when they graduate Lee County.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker. I, I, I'm going to ask... Ma'am, you're out of order. Will the following individuals please line up? Lou Navarro, Kristy Divageli, Yvette Venarock, Carol Hardy, Robert Davis. You can make your comment without yelling. You can make your comment without yelling.
Simon Susco. Humiliating and racist comments about a group of students is bad enough, but to say that is the most pressing problem principals are facing shows total ignorance regarding the true concerns in our schools. Kids are failing academically, face bullying, depression, and an abundance of other issues that are far more concerned students, parents, teachers, and also the community. Flush Chris Patrica.
Please keep your voices--
So this is the audience's first warning. We're going to abide by the board policy. No personal attacks. If you want to make a charge or an allegation, we ask you to follow the appropriate process per Board Policy 1.11-6B. And you will have a special time to come in and make your comments. Otherwise, if you have not done so, we will abide by the policy. No personal attacks.
Dr. Iris Ramirez. I heard a rumor that this school board wants to celebrate alternative sexual practices for a month. Everything should go through the lens of how does this benefit students? Promoting sex to children is not what we pay our taxes for. It is not why parents send the children to school for, much less for exposing minors to non-biological slash non-reproductive sexual lifestyles. This can actually confuse and even frighten children who are properly clueless on such adult matters. It does not promote better graduation rates or literacy. So why are we wasting time and resources instead of focusing on improving the education, as mentioned by previous speakers? Me having to come here to speak on this is a waste of time. The angst this causes in the community is a waste of time and energy. Do the things that benefit the students and nothing else. If only I--
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Yvette Benaroc, say Vice Chairwoman of the Republican National Hispanic Assembly of Florida. We acknowledge and appreciate the apology issued by Lee County School Board Member District 3 for her recent comments about Guatemalan students. However, that is not enough, and we demand her resignation immediately. As a school board member and president of the Florida School Board Association, school member District 3 should reflect on and examine her cultural assumptions regarding Latin American students in Lee County. We expect our education officials to have knowledge, grace, and decorum when teaching students from all cultural backgrounds. School Board Member District 3, racist and discriminatory comments express a lack of knowledge about the students in the Lee County district, which, by the way, the majority are from Hispanic heritage. By looking at this board, you wouldn't expect that to be the case because sadly, this board is not representative of the demographics of this district. We Americans of Hispanic ethnicity do not seek special privilege or consideration. We just want to be treated equally. Chris Patrica resigns.
Christine Dividelli. I have a question about this part of an email that I read today. The mask mandate for employees came from the interim superintendent and will continue according to the number of infections. Another part of this email says, "The other MOU is how transportation employees are around tracking their time for payroll. All employees will vote on both. Voting no will not take away the mask mandate. It will only take away the 10 days and the $1,000 bonus. Teachers, support staff, bus drivers, you deserve better. Power to parent wants to help you. We're ready to help you. Get in touch with us."
Good evening, board members. My name is Carol Hardy. I'm a school bus driver. And my concerns, I have two. One is that buses have anywhere from six to 60 kids on them. There's no social distancing. And the parents are screaming at us, "We don't have to put masks on our children." Our drivers are dying because they don't have to put masks on their children. We need masks. If nothing else, on the buses. Kill us off. Your kids won't get to school. My other is that when we fill out our extra time, we're made to sign a statement saying that if we're lying, we can be prosecuted and go to jail. In 70 years, I've never had any of my people that I work for mistrust me like that. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Jaclyn Perez, Denise Nystrom, Christine Widhere, Jane Santangelo, Lori Fahey. Please make sure you stand on the other side of the stanchion. I think that's-- Thank you.
Sir, go ahead, please.
Well, once the timer comes up. There you go, sir.
Hello, my name's Robert Davis. I'm a bus driver out of East Zone. And there's a lot of politics going on here. I'm not about any of that. I'm here about one thing: money. Our drivers need to be paid. Most of our drivers are up in the morning and working two hours before most of you people get out of bed. We carry the most precious cargo in the world: your children. You should think about that. Show the drivers some respect that they deserve and they need. All drivers in attendance in this room, please stand. I want you to know-- I want everybody in this room to know that we're all watching. You just saw a few of us this time. Get ready for the next meeting. Lou Navarro, 76-year-old widower, 38-year teacher, honorably discharged, yet veteran. I taught in this system. I'm appalled at all you people. You won't even let the children have a mask and the governor playing politics. You know what? Did you ever hear the word in loco parentis? It means the teacher, like me, was in charge of your child. You have no business to tell me how to do my job. You have no business, and the governor too, has no business. He only taught one year and washed out. I've read about him. Now, I want to see the kids with masks. Why would we hurt our children? You people have lost it. If you want to be the teacher, go in and pick up the chalk. I never told a man or a woman how to do their job for air conditioning or any other, or a barter.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Shame on you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, board. The majority of students in Lee County's school system are Hispanic. District 3's comments are evidence that she does not stand for the majority of our students and families. District 3's multiple recorded public violations of the Sunshine Act, her treatment of others, her being the cause of multiple investigations and lawsuits, and now her racist comments about Guatemalan children prove that she is not an elected official for the people. And she is certainly not an elected official for all the people. I urge the board to not wait for her resignation, but they must demand her resignation. Governance by passivity is governance by corruption. District 3's apology in the media was far from an apology today. She was quoted as saying she regrets hurting people's feelings, but she did not acknowledge the falsehoods in her statement, nor did she acknowledge her obvious bias that brown children are uncivilized. And let me remind you, board. Last year in January, I represented and helped an employee that was a bus driver here, Oscar Jomisti, where she stood up and demanded his resignation or his termination because he had sworn at another employee--
Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Denise Nystrom. The discriminatory remarks about Guatemalan Mayan children show the lack of moral character by District 3 board member. Her insidious behavior has plagued the board for years. Two years ago, she falsely set up District 2 board member with a watermark incident which was found to be false. She did not want to hire the attorney that sits here today, and she made her life miserable. She badgered RSM, the auditing committee, and they quit. She has undermined the superintendent with the goal of having somebody else take over so that she can be back to her underhanded business as usual. District 6, District 5, and District 2 board members speak a lot about the unethical behavior and manipulation that needs to stop. Carpe diem, board members. This is your opportunity to take a stand and represent the public. Tell District 3 to resign. Of course, it would be better if she would just please, please, please resign on her own.
Hi, I'm Christine. I work at a Buckingham Transportation. I have two concerns here. One is why they keep messing with your RTM, keep cutting your hours back, but don't take no students off. They put them on. And another thing is why they make us pay back the stimulus money that they were given when Irma was here. They took one day out of every pay from the Transportation Department till the end of February, when they were giving it to them for free. Somebody needs to look into it. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Stephanie Hoffman, Rochelle Jocelyn, Jan M., Jerry Ware, Melissa Hatter.
Hi, I'm Lori Fahey. I would like for one of you board members to arrange a meeting with these bus drivers and direct the superintendent to do the same. They have some serious concerns here. On another subject, if someone is paid as an employee, they are guaranteed employee rights as well as being held up to employee professional standards, including those rules regarding discriminatory statements about students or stakeholders and rules against using the district logo. So either District 3 board member was representing the district with permission, and she made discriminatory remarks using the district, or she was on her own time speaking for herself and violating policy by using the logo, also requiring termination. So if she doesn't resign, the Lee School is bound by ethics to terminate her pay.
My name is Jane Santangelo. I'm from Cape Coral, Florida. And as a concerned American, I am concerned about the educational level of our children. And I hold you all responsible for that. Because if your paycheck was directly impacted by the fact that the stats of the educational level of our children go down, I would like to see how fast your keisters would get on the stick and start producing and getting the children up to speed.
Rochelle Jocelyn. As a former Lee County school district teacher, I would like to speak to first masks for our teachers. Give them the option. The positivity rate for Lee County has fallen the last three weeks consecutively, this week being below 8%. I don't know if you're waiting for it to get zero, but it's never going to get there because the only people being tested are the sick people. So give them the option. I'm going to also, as a Lee County teacher, try to explain all of the struggles of our ESAL students, none of which involves water or staring at water. Students are not given enough resources. Students don't always have access to a teacher. At my school, it was a revolving paraprofessional with minimal training, not their fault, but not always qualified to help in the classroom. Thank God for the custodial staff at my school because they were always willing to jump in and help resource teachers like myself who don't speak Spanish. God forbid you speak Creole or Portuguese. Those poor kids. The biggest drain on the students is the outdated ESAL test students are forced to take every year. Three parts: speaking, writing, and--
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Melissa Hatter. Thank you for informing us it unlawful to disrupt the meeting. I will remind you of the case studies I shared with you demonstrating the consistent trend of courts ruling public comment viewpoint restrictions as unconstitutional. The verbiage "personal attacks" was specifically named a violation of our First Amendment rights. We are permitted to speak on any school district business. Obviously, this would include specific individuals of staff and school board. I'm here by making an official complaint against the school board and their attorney for the violation of our First Amendment rights with unconstitutional creation, use, and enforcement of Board Policy 1.11. You all signed a loyalty oath to uphold the Constitution, law, and policies. Our protected constitutional rights trump anybody's pride or ego.
Good evening. My name's Stephanie Hoffman. I'm a Lee County resident for 15 years. I have two children in public schools at this time, including my son Marshall, who asked that I acknowledge him this time because I forgot to last time, who's sitting up there, fourth grade at Edison Park. I'm here to implore you to reinstate a mask mandate or at least consider reinstating a mask mandate for students. Teachers have a mask mandate, and numerous people around here have cited that the positivity rate has gone down. The positivity rate has gone down. I suggest that it has gone down in the county and in the school district itself because the teachers are now wearing masks. If you remove a mask mandate, then it's going to go back up again like it was at the beginning of the school year, and I can do this too. I also ask that you address the recent report that the Florida Department of Education didn't request any federal funds for COVID relief. I know for a fact that the school board did expend money. Please get some--
Ma'am, will the following individuals please line up? Pebbles Poole, Sonia Issler, Elijah Scary, Silas Oliver, Jamie Kirchner.
Hi, my name is Jan. I just want to take a minute and thank Lee County Schools for its strong anti-bullying policy, which with a little research on my part, I found out that it's from the Jeffrey Johnston Stand Up For All Students Act that was passed by rarely unified Florida legislature in 2008. And what I found out was this student-- there are 67 counties in Florida, but he was from Lee County. He was, age 15, a Cape Coral honor student who took his own life one night because he was tired of being called faggot, fat, and ugly and dealing with cyber attacks. So I want to thank you for having this policy. And I want to suggest that we, as adults, hold ourselves to the same standards that we're asking our kids to hold too, which is no harassment, no intimidation, anti-bullying. We can do it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Ware. And I'm here tonight to ask one simple question. And that is, what is the plan for the school district? The census is now out. Redistricting process is in place. My question is, what does the school district plan to do? Because at the county commissioners' meetings, you've learned and was told that you do not have to adhere to the maps that were drawn by the county. And my last remark is that I am very, very happy to say that I was able to participate in the discussion-- So I don't even know why you're using it, and I don't even know why you're looking at me when I'm talking. It's so disrespectful, because we're here just to talk to you. I want to tell you that the masks have been proved to be damaging, and there's lots of studies, and I can share it to you. The masks decrease their oxygen intake, increase tonics inhalation, shut down your immune system, and increase the virus risk. So I don't understand why we have masks for kids for eight hours. It doesn't really make any sense. There's not one study that shows that the masks work. There's no study at all. So I don't even know why you're using it, and I don't even know why you're looking at me when I'm talking. It's so disrespectful, because we're here just to talk to you. I want to tell you that the masks have been proved to be damaging, and there's lots of studies, and I can share it to you. The masks decrease their oxygen intake, increase tonics inhalation, shut down your immune system, and increase the virus risk. So I don't understand why we have masks for kids for eight hours. It doesn't really make any sense. There's not one study that shows that the masks work. If you have one study to show me, I would be more than happy to see it, but there's no study at all. The study that Fossey put over there, there's not showing any data. It is nothing...
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Pebbles Poole. I'm a Lee County school bus driver. I'm representing all the drivers in attendance. During the pandemic, we came back to work. We know, everybody knows there's a shortage of bus drivers. We were given five, six routes to do, and having to cover different runs. We never left a child behind, but we have to hear from, getting yelled at from parents about why we're late, what can we do? And every time we address it, it's the same thing. We're sorry. We still pick up the kids, even if they're late, but we still get them to school. Every year, we hear, we are the first ones they see, the last ones they see, but we're not considered first responders. We get the kids to school safe, back home safe. We deserve a raise. We have a raise freeze for six years. They want to offer $20 to new drivers.
Ma'am, next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Elijah Scurry, and I'm here on behalf of Transportation. Before you step on a plane, a mask is not... Before you step on a Lee County public street bus, a mask is required. No options. Why? Because the distance between you and the next person is less than six feet. Transportation does not have that option. We are being told to be professional and deal with the problem the best way we can. We are being forced to cover routes and double routes because it's within our RTM. When the contract said this is accepted if 50 or more drivers are out in each zone, we are being worked countless hours without downtime because the drivers are quarantined and can't come to work. But their routes have already started, giving us no time to sanitize our bus. The cost of living has gone up, yet our pay remains the same. We are paying...
Thank you. Will the following individuals please line up? Kate Owens, Carissa Knowles, Kathy Stout, Tina Harris.
My name is Aracelis Oliver. I've been serving today, this street, for 14 years, like assistant teacher, jumping to transportation for second year. I'm so proud to be part of the team, and I want to touch two things that hurt us a lot. Salary, raise the salary. We have to do a lot of things through the day. A mask. Why they force us to use a mask when probably we are in more reach to using this when they pass by us to our level? Be fair. Masks for them, masks for us. No masks for them, no masks for us. Because when they pass through us, we are at their level. We are at reach. We have a lot of drivers that are asthmatic, diabetic, and they need to take care. We are more in danger to using this because we catch with the web, we catch more bacteria, we catch more things, and it's not fair. Parents are not happy because kids don't use masks. Be fair, please.
Ma'am, next speaker, please.
I'm Jamie Kerschner. I want to thank you all for helping me get that public request the last time I was here. I appreciate that. It's unfortunate that we have to go through these methods to be able to get the response that we need. We are asking you to please be transparent and please not retaliate anymore against staff members that are trying to do what's right when it comes to our ESE students, especially. District 3 met with a group of our parents, and this started in April, and this district did not get back with these parents multiple times after multiple meetings, and then, all of a sudden, one of our members that worked for the district got fired. So we're asking for help. We need systemic change for ESE students. I shouldn't have to be representing a seven-year-old who's been Baker Acted twice because his IEP isn't being followed, and I shouldn't have to go to due process with our district when we try to sit at the table of mediation. What are you doing with your funds? Put it towards the kids and stop litigating parents.
Good evening, Kathy Stout. I have a lot of concerns on education, and my major one is, why are we teaching the new staff how to do something called circles? Is the school board aware of that? Do you even know what that is? I was told by a new member on your staff, who is a new teacher, that they are taught, and quote, "My training, for instance, was all about social and emotional well-being. They discussed doing what they call circles, where the kids meet and mentor, share personal stuff, where they all sit in a circle." It looked very creepy. Not only that, they also are telling us that we are supposed to discuss gender. We're also supposed to discuss sexual preferences. Why aren't we teaching our teachers how to educate our children? Why are we discussing about genders? Why are we discussing about sexuality? And just recently...
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please. Ma'am, if you don't mind standing behind on the other side of the stanchions, thank you.
Right here, stay right here?
Yes, you're fine.
Okay. Good evening. I'm grateful tonight, because I'm one of the few drivers or teachers and ones who work closely with our students is still alive. I truly believe a person who has not had a person experience COVID like I have. I had a sister die, and to see the progression, how it's a debilitating disease. And at the end, you suffer. And I do not want to live like that. And I want every driver, every teacher, every class, every student, every person who has that worth. And I want them to just let you know at the end, my sister died. Only thing I had to do, I had to sign a waiver to go into the room and not to see her die by herself. You know, it's hard to see your family member die by themselves. And I want everyone to know, you are worth it.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's Carissa Knowles, and I'm a parent of an ESE child in the district. I'm sorry. I just don't want people to have to go through what I had to with my child to get the services they need. We had to go to a district facilitated IEP meeting. I know it could have been worse, but we just want to help other parents. We want to collaborate with the school so other kids don't have to do what my child had to do and wait for those services. We just want to work with you. That's all we want. We want the kids to get what they need. Thank you.
Hi there, Kate Owens. Thank you, Board, and thank you, bus drivers, for getting my ESE baby to school every day. I appreciate it so much. Once again, I'm addressing the Board. I tried for five years to do it your way and work with the school. I want to know why I had to sue and go to due process to get my son the services that the federal government and FAP and IDEA says he should get. These kids are gravely underserved in ESE. We are way behind the times. We, a whole bunch of moms and teachers and administrators, want to collaboratively work with Lee County's school system to make progressive change. I'm asking again to please meet with us, please work with us, please hear us. Your teachers need support. These parents need heard. We are absolutely bullied in IEP meetings, and we're not going to stand forward anymore. Thank you.
Madam Chair, it would appear that is the end of public comments.
Thank you very much. First of all, I really want to tell you how much I appreciate everybody, everyone coming this evening and speaking. To our bus drivers out there, thank you so much. We could not do what we do without you all. And I know that you're, to me, you're really, really important. And Dr. Savage, do you want to maybe address, I know we're going to be reaching out, or you're going to be reaching out to them?
Yes. Address that? Yes, Madam Chair, absolutely. Yeah, I actually do have a meeting scheduled this month on Thursday evening with Lehigh Senior to meet with our bus drivers. So I know it's on our calendar, and it's a Thursday evening. I know the prior one was rescheduled due to conflict, but they have it rescheduled, and it's at Lehigh Senior. I believe it's on the 21st of October.
Okay. Will you all, it will be notified, right?
Let me get the time real quick. I think 6 o'clock, I want to say. Let me just double check. Yeah, it looks like 6:30 at Lehigh Senior High on October the 21st on the calendar.
Because he does want to, we do want to hear your concerns and your comments, and so Dr. Savage will be reaching out and making that possible for you all.
Just thank you to our drivers, absolutely. Thank you for showing up here like this. We just really appreciate all of you. I think you've heard us many times, but to see you face to face, thank you for what you do for our children every single day. We want to hear every concern that you have and do the best we can to address those concerns. So thank you very much.
And I apologize. I'm trying to get my notes. And Dr. Savage, I'm also going to ask you if maybe Ms. Bowens can reach out to, I believe it was Ms. Knowles, regarding her child?
I had notes for the last two speakers specifically with those similar theme pieces. I made a note to get in contact with them so I can get a little more detail about that piece. I know there's been some ongoing meetings, but just to get a little bit more specificity, I've got about 15 specific ones, but those two in particular were there.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we do that. And then I'm going to ask Dr. Savage one more thing regarding the, there was teachers here speaking on the mask, and did you want to share regarding tomorrow?
Yes, that is, yes, Madam Chair. Just as a priority, of course, we have our expert panel that is meeting tomorrow. That is their first meeting, and again, they're not just looking at masks, they're going to be looking at all of our mitigation measures. It's an ongoing body of work. That way, as we have a tiered rubric, I do want to acknowledge that the conditions right now are substantially better than where they have been, so we're all aware of that and very excited that things have improved dramatically. At the same time, we also want to be even more prepared next time so that we understand what our mitigations will be, as validated through an expert panel, so that we're more prepared if we see any recurrence of this during the flu season as well.
Dr. Savage, Mr. Prey Bruno?
And just one thing, just so that the public knows as well, with regards to due process cases, I know that Legal Services tries everything it can do to try to get these things resolved prior to. So prior to the filing of the due process, please talk to our staff attorney, because I know that she works very diligently to see if we can resolve these things prior to it going to a due process hearing.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. So we will go ahead and continue on. The next is the approval of the action items in the agenda under consent. The documents, the documentation for action item listed under consent is made available to the Board Member seven business days prior to the Board meeting. We are expected to review all materials, and we have the opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshop with the Board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board Members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business table item portions of the agenda? Ms. Fisher?
I have no pulls this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Givinelli?
I have none.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Skittens?
I have none.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
I have none.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items?
I'll move that we can approve the consent agenda action items.
Ms. Fisher, may I have a second? Wait, Ms. Morgan? Okay. Motion by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. Morgan. Please record your votes. Dr. Savage, do you have anybody to introduce this evening? Okay, Dr. Savage, please introduce any administrators in attendance with new assignments that were approved under the consent agenda.
My pleasure, Madam Chair. I'd like to recognize Sabah Yassin Gomez, Food Nutrition Services, going from training supervisor to staffing and operations coordinator. I'd also like to recognize Bertie Alvarez in Title I, from district teacher on assignment to program administrator. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, we are moving to public hearings. Dr. Savage, please present your recommendation for this evening's public hearing items.
Yes, Madam Chair. P1, Approval to Adopt Policy 2.062, the Parents' Bill of Rights in Compliance with Changes and Related Rules, Regulations, and Statutes, to adopt best practices and to promote transparency and accountability. The effective date is October 6, 2021.
And go ahead and read the second. Did you just read?
The second is P2, the Approval to Revise Policy 2.18, District Management and Selection of Instructional Materials in Compliance with Changes and Related Rules, Regulations, and Statutes, to adopt best practices and to promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be October 6, 2021.
Thank you. We will now recess the regular school board meeting and open the public hearing. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is to consider Approval to Adopt Policy 2.0262, Parents' Bill of Rights in Compliance with Changes and Related Rules, Regulations, and Statutes, to adopt best practices and to promote transparency and accountability. The effective date is October 6, 2021. And then number two is Approval to Revise Policy 2.18, District Management and Selection of Instructional Materials in Compliance with Changes and Related Rules, Regulations, and Statutes, to adopt best practices and to promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be October 6, 2021. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on these two items. The time allowed for comment is three minutes. Is there anyone on the right? Please go back. And if there's anyone over here on the left-hand side as well, you're welcome to go back, please. And then Ms. Thomas? And then Ms. Thomas, will you be ready? Okay. And whoever, the first speaker, please just step up. And just please remember it's on these two items, please. Thank you.
Christine Divageli. So while you are, while you are reviewing the Parent's Bill of Rights and the policy and how it will be implemented and all that fun stuff, I would imagine that the process in order, you know, for teachers and staff and administrators to go through when a parent wants to exercise their right is something that you guys are taking into consideration as well. When taking that into consideration, something that you might want to omit from that process because it lacks, it lacks a, what's the word? Well, I can't think of the word right now, but you'll, you'll, you'll know what I'm talking about in a minute here. If I want to go into the school to look at my children, my child's curriculum and her educational materials, if I want to look at the instructional materials, I have to ask the, I have to ask the teacher, so I have to let the teacher know beforehand what my request is, when I want to come in, what day, like all, where is the transparency in that? There is no transparency in that. I'm not allowed to take pictures or videos, not allowed to talk to the teacher, even though I've already had to communicate with the teacher that I even want to set up the appointment. If I want to meet, if I want to see the instructional materials in a specific teacher's classroom, there is a reason for it. I obviously do not want to give the teacher a heads up so they can clean everything out and make sure that their curriculum is acceptable for my viewing pleasure on that day. That is absolutely absurd. And the fact that this is even a part of your policy and procedure for this particular policy is completely uncalled for. Where is the transparency? Where is the accountability? There is absolutely none of that here. So what I would ask is that verbiage like that be omitted completely. If I have a request and that from a specific teacher's classroom, I should not have to give that teacher notice and an opportunity to clean things up. I obviously have an issue and that's why I brought it to your administration's attention in the first place. So since we're still in this drafting process, can you please do me a favor and make sure that there is language in this that protects parents' rights a little bit better than it currently does?
Denise Nyström, on the same old role. Well, except one thing is new. The National School Boards Association wants to call us domestic terrorists. Isn't that interesting? We're coming here to fight for kids, yet they want to call us domestic terrorists. I hope you pass a resolution in support of us, not against us. With regarding the Parents' Bill of Rights, I've said it before, I'll say it again, you can pass any policy you want, but until you are giving them an opt-in letter, it really doesn't mean anything. Having a policy doesn't mean that they know what their rights are. Do they know if there are boys in the girls' bathrooms? Do they know if teachers are teaching morality in the classroom? Has any of this been addressed? We've been talking about it for months and months. Are you just going to hide the policy in the code of conduct and just let it all skate away? Just, it's just, oh, and by the way, that form that students have to sign, the one, if they're LGBTQ, that they, somebody falsely amended and put the parents' signature on it is once again online with only the student's signature. That speaks directly against the Parents' Bill of Rights.
Hi, I'm Melissa Hatter again. I agree with the omissions needed from the Parents' Bill of Rights, but what needs to be included is the parents have the right to know the process and what to do if any of our rights are violated. Who do we go to? Who enforces it? And staff needs to know the consequences of violating that. That's been the point of contention on many cases brought before the board and we need to eliminate that in advance from problems with this because it's going to arise. Thank you.
Robert Roper, also known as Ward Cleaver. To begin with, the Parents' Bill of Rights was only an assembly of existing rights that parents had in other Florida statutes and should have already been a part of what Lee County School Board would have granted to children. Secondly, there are, there seem to be policies which are invisible to the parents concerning LGBTQ things like bathroom use. We know that it's going on. We, we have firsthand knowledge of it, but we can't find a policy anywhere. Your principals obviously have the policies, but do the parents. And in order for a parent to know their rights, shouldn't they know the policies? Lastly, you have an anti-discrimination policy. Within that policy, you guarantee the rights of freedom of religion and at the same time, gender orientation. They're diametrically opposed. You cannot have both within the same policy. You have to choose one or the other. It's impossible to enforce both.
Tara Jenner. We've all heard the expression, putting lipstick on a pig. And I've been around long enough, probably more than most of the people on the board, maybe with a couple of exceptions like Mary Fisher and Kathleen Morgan, who've seemed to have just grown roots. And I was here when we were looking at opting out of standardized testing and fighting against Common Core. And most of you know that we've changed to Florida standards, Florida state standards, and for an extended period of time and to a certain degree now, all that did was take the words Common Core and scratch them and put Florida standards on top of it. And when it comes to this whole thing about Parents' Bill of Rights, I have a big concern because the $59 million grant that you guys approved tonight, if you actually go and Google search some of the topics that are incorporated in that, you will find the National Association of School Psychologists and everything on their website is critical race theory, but they're saying it's not critical race theory. They're saying it looks like a duck and it quacks like a duck, but it's not a duck, it's social emotional learning. And by the way, did you know that critical race theory isn't a dangerous thing at all? It has nothing to do with the 1619 Project, which by the way, they quote in there as being a Pulitzer Prize-winning journalist article. It's all about indoctrination. You can go to their Save Promise website through the material that you guys had in your briefing earlier and it has in there how students can actually contact their local and their state reps in order to be able to push for gun control. This is nothing but indoctrination. If you're really going to be serious about the Parents' Bill of Rights, you need to do a few things. One, you need to make sure the parents understand that there's still indoctrination going on in the schools and exactly what that is so they can opt out their kids from any of this psychosocial learning stuff and anything dealing with any of these school psychologists that may be indoctrinating them on the side. Also, I know that the statute itself talks about opting out on a lot of things, but there's nothing in this statute that would preclude or prevent this school district going above and beyond and offering an opt-in as well. You have opt-in for going into sports activities. We have online opt-ins, which one of our board members seems to think we have to do everything by paper and it's going to be a big paperwork overload, but it's not. We can do everything online these days and we can make sure that the families actually know what it is they're agreeing to. And I'm still vehemently objecting to the fact that our board attorney did not see fit to have in the prior code of conduct just a cross-reference to the statutes by incorporation. There's no reason that can't be done.
Kathy Stout again. I just wanted to let you know one thing. Education is, is a big thing for parents and I want to remind you for the Bill of Rights, there is something that's going on that I'm not liking. So you're separating the children from the parents, that's one, and I don't like that. And the other thing is, I don't like the fact that we just had banned book week this past weekend that just happened. And unfortunately, some of those books are in our Lee County School District libraries and some of the teachers were told, were told, and I repeat, told, that they are supposed to let the children know that they can still get these books in our Lee County School District. If we're already banning them from the schools, why are we allowing the children to continue reading it? And the other thing is too, did you know some of them had pornography in it? That's a huge thing. It's going viral. And I know you have seen some of these videos that's been, you know, to your attention. And if you haven't, you really need to pay attention because this is in our school district and it's young as kindergarten and that's disgraceful. And I am so tired of, you know, these children don't have voices until they tell their parents until they go home, right? So one thing that I need to know from all of you, why are you teaching the new teachers coming in not education? Why are we teaching them sexual conduct? Why are we teaching them, you know, transgender and things like that? What happened to basic, basic, basic education? What happened to that? I mean, the writing skills, the reading skills? You heard the numbers, that lady that you kicked out the other, tonight, you know? Our stats are there. It's proven. It's there. So that's all I have to say.
Good evening. Stephanie Hoffman again to speak in favor of the Parents' Bill of Rights, merely to acknowledge that it is your statutory duty to pass it because it was signed into law by the governor in July and you're required to pass it. I appreciate the difficulty that it is to formulate curriculum that will satisfy the multitude. It seems like everybody that has spoken prior to me has been, has taken issue with one thing or another, such as banned books, like To Kill a Mockingbird, or with the fact that there are people with sexual preferences that may not agree with their religion. I appreciate the difficulty of passing a Parents' Bill of Rights that will meet the strict scrutiny that you have with all of these different and diverging views. I would ask you to pass the Parents' Bill of Rights as written because it does satisfy the statutory duty that you're held to and also it satisfies the requirements that the state is going to hold you to. And it allows the parents to have a sight into what their children are learning without the parents actually sitting in the classrooms. I am not suggesting that parents should sit in the classrooms. If they want to do that, they can homeschool their children. We teach you, we are allowing our, we send our kids to school so that you can act in loco parentis, as someone else said, in the place of the parents. We are trusting you with our children.
Hi, Rochelle Jocelyn again. I just wanted to be able to finish my thought about the ESAL students as it does speak to best practice, but thank you for providing water, but that's much appreciated.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
And can you stop her time for a second? It's, it has to be on this subject only, dear.
You said best practice was the second.
Yeah, it has to be just for, let me.
The two board policies.
The approval of the, the policy 2.062 and 2.18. That's the only thing that public comments.
I understand. I read, I went through the board docs and thought that it was discussing best practice in the classroom. Is that not the case? Am I wrong? I'm sorry if I am.
One policy.
Wait, Ms., just a second. Ms. DePree Bruno?
One policy is with regards to the Parents' Bill of Rights pursuant to the statute that became effective July 1 and the other policy is also with a tweaking from the statutory language regarding instructional materials and the opportunity for parents to, well, really the obligation of the board to bring certain materials to them for a vote and review. So 2.062 is Parents'.
Testing of ESAL students?
No, that's, that's completely off-topic on this one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Edward Grass. I was sitting here reading policy 2.18 and a question came up in my mind, an observation and a request. First of all, are there books in our school libraries that are donated by private groups that may be of questionable nature that do not go through the curriculum review process? I'd like perhaps Dr. Spiro or someone from the curriculum department to get back to me on that. They have my email. My observation is I'm looking at paragraph two, objection to instructional materials presently in use. This is a long, convoluted process to remove material from the, the district library and teachings shelves. I'm wondering if there's a way this can be streamlined in a manner which parents can actually understand. And then my observation is, is it possible to do a true audit of the library materials available in the district at this point and make that part of the public record? Thank you.
Is there anyone else that may like to speak regarding these two topics? CNN, we will go ahead and, I will now close this public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of October 5, 2021. And Dr. Savage, please reinstate your recommendations for this evening's public hearing items.
Yes, Madam Chair.
One at a time, please.
P1, approval to adopt policy 2.062, Parent Bill of Rights.
Okay, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approves to adopt policy 2.062, Parents' Bill of Rights in compliance with changes and related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date is October 6, 2021. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve the superintendent's recommendation to adopt policy 2.062, Parents' Bill of Rights.
I'll second that. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Moved by Ms. Morgan, seconded by Ms. Fisher. Is there any discussion? Ms. Juvenelli?
I am in support of this this evening and I think it's really important to, for, and I brought this up earlier, that the parents have the ability to know what their rights are and that, that it's information that's out there because I think that is one of the struggles is that the parents don't know about their bill of rights. So I don't know, you know, and that they have these rights and it's unfortunate that we have to make sure that that's the case, but there's so many people are not afforded their rights or have the due process and so I think it's really important that they are afforded that as well. And I think it's important to point out that Tallahassee had to strengthen the Constitution because their, their right, the parents' rights is already in the Constitution and Tallahassee had to make this, bring forward, enforce this bill of rights to be more aware and publicly, for our families. And I think that's really important because I actually spoke to one of the local, the local delegation, one of the, one here in Fort Myers, and I said, you know, well, the Constitution affords the parents their bill of rights. And he said, this bill of rights, or the parents' rights, he said, this bill of rights will only strengthen it. And, and that's sad to me because what has happened is we've had school boards over, all over the state that's not afforded the parent, the parents' rights. And so this is to help parents understand they are their advocate and the voice for their children and it's important that they know that and are aware of that because unfortunately, somehow that's been lost. So I, I, I'm excited about having the Parents' Bill of Rights and see how it affords our families what is needed to happen in our schools. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Ms. Ju, I'm sorry, Ms. Skittens?
That's Juvenelli. Thank you. I, I too am glad that there is the Parents' Bill of Rights, that everything is laid out for parents to know what their rights are for their children. My question is, the 60% of our students and families, what have we really done to ensure? My question is, the 60% of our students and families, what have we really done to ensure that they truly understand? Has there been, uh, you know, when I, I look at this document all in red and all these lines and numbers, and how has this really been explained to the 60% of our population? Have we had meetings or small groups where we sit down and, and explain this section here promoting parent involvement? What does that mean? Translate that into Spanish or Creole, and what does it really mean? Because if you're coming from a different culture, some of this terminology does not translate well. If you translate it literally, it can get lost in translation what it really means to me as a minority parent. So I'm just saying, it's a good thing, but I think we need to take it a step further to make sure people understand and answer questions. We need to take things down to the next level. This is educase, and you know, we, we, with degrees, understand it, but does everyone else understand what their rights are as well?
Are there any other comments? Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, um, okay. So as a longtime member of this district who obviously has grown roots, I came here in the early eighties and started teaching here from New York. And one of the biggest challenge is that we had as staff members at schools was getting parent involvement. And I can remember having shows, art shows, theater groups, dinners, going in caravans to different areas of the county to try to reach the parents, holding some of our school advisory meetings in different areas so that we could reach the parents of the kids. The other night, I heard the representatives from the ESOL department talk about how they are meeting with parent groups. So there's a lot of efforts that I don't want for, to go unnoticed by the members of our staff and the people at our schools who work very hard to try to get parent involvement. One of the biggest things that, that I did was say, parents are our partners, and we need you. So we have some parents who have really taken a very big interest and are educated and have the ability to find out what their rights are. These rights, this Parents' Bill of Rights is nothing new. Parents have always had these rights. This is just a composite presentation of this. So I just want for us to really understand that every effort is made by our district staff, by our school staff, to reach out to parents and families to, because without parents' involvement, the kids are not going to be as successful. The research all says that. So I, I just wanted to say that and to appreciate the people who work in this district and have worked in this district and really want parents to be a part of the process of the education of our kids in this community. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Fisher. Is there anyone else with any more comments?
Did she have hand? I just, if I may, just very quickly, my comment had nothing to do with the fact that the staff isn't working hard to do things. My question was, how can we enhance that? When, when I make comments about things that we can do to improve, it is not a negative to things that we are doing. And I just want that on the record, please.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. See any other comments? Could you please record your votes? It's okay.
It is a positive.
Okay, motion carries, 7-0. Okay, Dr. Savage, could you please read number two?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. P2, Approval to Revise Policy 2.18, District Management and Selection of Instructional Materials.
Thank you. You have heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approves to adopt policy 2.18, District Management and Selection of Instructional Materials in compliance with changes in related rules, regulation, and statutes to adopt best practices and to promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be October 6, 2021. Board members, is there a motion to approve this item?
I move that we approve the superintendent's recommendation to revise policy 2.18, District Mismanagement, and, excuse me, District Management and Selection of Instructional Materials.
Thank you. You have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. It has been moved by Ms. Morgan and seconded by Ms. Vaughn. Is there any discussion? See no discussion, please record your vote. Thank you. Okay, we are to board member comments, and I am going to go with Ms. Fisher. Oh, can we take a, just a, just a two-minute break until we get this done, before we come back to public comments?
Sure.
Five minutes, because I know it's going to be longer.
What is this for?
Just a five-minute break, and then we're going to come back because we're going to have more discussion. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. We are going to, we are back in our meeting, and we are, and I apologize for the, I had to get a sugar break, so I apologize for that. Ms. Fisher, we were going to start with you for member comments, please.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I want to begin as a longtime advocate of comprehensive health education and a longtime member of the school advisory committee. I want to thank our board members for supporting and allowing me to send a letter with letters of support from the community for the comprehensive health. And I want to thank Mrs. Morgan for bringing up that CNN report because that really was an important piece of information. So thank you for that. I attended the September CSI meeting, Continuous Systemic Improvement. Attorney Dupree Bruno went over policies and procedures for advisories. We had discussions about the Student Advisory Committee, the parent involvement and activities that support our strategic plan and continuous systemic improvement. There was a student search, a superintendent's search student group selected from our district Student Advisory Committee, and I had, I was on the list, so I listened, I didn't talk, but the students were well-informed, they had incredibly intense comments, good feedback, they demonstrated a lot of awareness, they were right on target with, with what is going on in the community. It was very eye-opening and, for me, inspired confidence in the future of our community to know that our kids are well-educated, well-informed, and interested in what is happening in their community. So kudos to those student representatives and their parents and teachers. I have a little, a student sent me a little note, a special note, and I want to share it with you. This is a high school student. Things that stress us out: timed tests, lots of homework, work due before the end of class, when teachers don't go over the answers, high expectations but no motivations. We use each other to get a better understanding of topics because the alternative is to watch a YouTube video. So I thought that was kind of cute, and I wanted to share that. October is a very busy month. It's Red Ribbon Month, and the 2021 theme for Red Ribbon Month is Drug-Free Looks Like Me. Our Lee County Drug-Free Coalition will be having their annual Red Ribbon Celebration here in the boardroom on October 27th. And at Cape Coral High School on October 29th, they'll be doing a break the internet with hashtag refuse. We invite people to participate. Bullying Prevention Month is also in October, and we stand up for students who are being bullied or who are committing bullying. I happen to be fortunate enough to work with Debbie Johnson, the mother of Jeffrey Johnson, from 2005 to 2008, when students lobbied in Tallahassee and in Washington and got the bill passed as a law in short time. I want to offer some special thanks to our bus drivers for safely getting our kids to and from school every day. They are the first people who see the kids in the morning and the last ones who, they probably know more about the children than anyone else, and we really appreciate them, and I hope that we can really do something to improve their, not only their working conditions, but their compensation. And I want to thank parents who do trust in the schools to take care of their kids in loco parentis. October is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It was launched nationwide in October 1987 as a way to connect and unite individuals and organizations working on domestic violence issues while raising awareness. Locally, our Abuse Counseling and Treatment Center offers a hotline, three safe shelters, children's programs, counseling, economic empowerment, injunction for protection, legal services, life skills education, job skills evaluation, and training along with GED assistance and ESOL preparation. They are really important to our community. I spoke to someone who is connected with a local family court judge, and the domestic violence incidents have really increased since the pandemic. ACT also provides community education, professional trainings, and education. They've been serving the five county area for over 40 years. October brings us breast cancer awareness, brings a healthy dose of hope to the forefront in the fight against the second-leading cause of death in women. Breast cancer. Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign by the National Cancer Foundation, raises public awareness in the disease that one in eight women will face. While the statistics sound scary, advancements in technologies and treatments have led to outcomes that are better than ever before. October is also LGBTQ History Month. This month-long commemoration is celebrated in the United States, Canada, and Australia. It was created in 1994. In 1995, a resolution passed by the General Assembly of the National Education Association included LGBTQ History Month within a list of commemorative months. Why do we celebrate LGBTQ History Month? The month, a national coordinated effort, is made to highlight and celebrate the history and achievements of LGBTQ people and learn just as much as we can about the movement. Elimination of the violence and unjustified hate towards the community can only be done by educating everyone about non-discrimination. Equality Florida Institute's Safe and Healthy Schools Project aims to create a culture of inclusion and social-emotional support while countering the bullying, harassment, social isolation, and bigotry that dramatically increase risks factors for our students, educators, and community members who are members of that group. I wish everyone a safe ride home and thank everybody for their participation in our school board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Giavanelle?
Here, please. Yes. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that came out and spoke tonight. Thank you to all the bus drivers that came out and spoke on everyone's behalf. And I hear you, and I am working for you to get that raise, as I agree you need a raise. Although I'm deeply distraught over the circumstances by the others that came out tonight, I am grateful that you made it a priority to show your concern with us. It is not a secret that I have undergone numerous attacks and allegations since my time on the board by Ms. Patrica and have stated publicly that I should be censored and by her and investigated and made it known that she did not feel comfortable sitting next to me as her fellow board member when I had... When she had fabricated an ethics complaint falsely against me. Ms. Patrica made it part of my ethics complaint as she veered out of her lane and abused her power by directing staff to investigate board members. I do not condone or agree with the verbiage and the xenophobic statements made by Ms. Patrica during the ECL, ECCL forum. While I will not pretend to understand racism at some level, or excuse me, at the same level the minority members in our community experience every day, I am making it a pledge to not, to you all, to be more aware and intolerant of it. Personally, I believe that when a fabricated and false comment is intentionally made to disparage a group of people by someone of difference, a different race, it is a textbook definition of racism. I feel I must stand up against that. Ms. Patrica stated today that she received the logo from Dr. Atkins to use for her Zoom background. I have never received such logo. In my early meeting today, also, I asked Ms. Patrica where she obtained the information. She provided regarding Guatemalan students playing with the plumbing, and she refused to answer the question. Ms. Patrica contradicted herself badly when she stated that she, and I quote, "that she never approaches staff without going through the superintendent," as it is our policy. And then also stated that staff provided her the information she received regarding students playing in the, playing with the plumbing, American plumbing. Towards the close of earlier meeting today, Ms. Patrica berated the board today to ask everyone to, that we're a team, and that... And she made that behavior, you know, and that was... I disagree with that. And wanted to have her own consensus for things for the board to change our own rules, which she simply have clearly in the past said she's a rule follower. Ms. Patrica does not abide by the rules, and she works so hard to enforce rules on the rest of us. Ms. Patrica often abuses her power. And let's think back last year when she stopped a prayer happening at a school athletic game. It is clear that she does not abide by her own rules and her role as a, and understands her role as a school board member. Ms. Patrica extremely is critical of school board attorney, the auditor, and the superintendent. Her comments against all three positions that we hire and supervise to lead, and to lead to our respective auditor who actually resigned from us, that led to our auditor, I'm sorry, resigning firm, RSM, who are, who, by the way, is a very respectable in the state of Florida. She has bullied and threatened the board attorney to the point that she had to write a letter to document the situation and to have it added to her file to protect herself from future abuse. Our own superintendent has been threatened by her on a regular basis. She consistently abuses her authority by singularly giving the superintendent and board attorney directives without consulting the board first. While I believe the right thing for Ms. Patrica to do is to resign, I am doubtful that will happen. The board must address the problems we have, frankly. We have fired, fired employees far for, far more for less, making the same things. We do not, we are not showing that we are leading by example and being on this board. That is exactly what we should be doing. And it's undermining everything that we do constantly. Here is an email I received from a teacher this afternoon after they heard what happened at our board meeting earlier today. It seems if someone is paid as an employee, they are guaranteed employee rights, as well as held up to employee professional standards, including those rules regarding discriminatory statements made about students or stakeholders and rules against using district logo. So, either she was representing the district with permission, or she was discriminatory, or she made discriminatory comments and statements calling for, which is called for termination. Or she was on her own, taking, speaking, taking the, on her own time, speaking for herself or violating policy by using the logo also requires termination. So, if she doesn't resign, Lee Schools is bound by ethics to terminate her pay. My reaction to her statements today, that is what someone sent me this afternoon. Tonight, I want to make a following motion. We need to conduct a full investigation into the actions of Ms. Patrica, continued abuse of power. I am bringing forward this resolution to censor Ms. Patrica. When she is representing the school district as a collegial board, she needs to inform us of her agenda and what she will be saying. This is, this is not the first time she has said these, said these things or written in an email disparaging students in our district. Those students deserve to be protected. When we have a board member that can cause this much harm, we need to act as a board to protect students and employees. And I just wanted to end with, we must lead by example. Thank you.
So, Ms. Dupree Bruno, or?
Ms. Giavanelle, did you make a formal motion?
I did.
And can you please restate the motion?
I would like to hold off on that formal motion until other board members have to speak because I, I know that there was another motion that was on the table or that was going, that we talked about earlier today. And I think this, this conversation can wait until that's presented. So, I'm just going to hold, can we hold off on that?
Is it possible for you to send, really, probably the entire board should get it, but I certainly want to see the motion as well, if you could?
Because I may withdraw my motion, depending how the conversation goes. And that's the reason why I, I am reluctant at this moment in time. I do think it's a conversation that we need to have more in-depth at this, at the table.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Giavanelle, was that?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. A few things came up in public comment tonight. If I may, through the chair, address the superintendent. So, I know that you have a meeting tomorrow regarding mitigation measures. Can you please get some kind of a definitive answer regarding plastic dividers? So, I did receive a call from a parent today who said that his young son has been complaining about not being able to see the board, and it's because of plastic dividers. And it's my understanding, I'm no scientist, you know that, it's my understanding that they are completely ineffective. I could be totally wrong on that. But if you could just, you know, let the board know in the next update, I'd really appreciate that. And then also, I thought there was a federal law requiring masks on transportation, on public transportation. I see Attorney Dupree Bruno is going to respond.
Well, it's a complicated response, honestly. And may I send a memo on that? There is, there was an executive order that was issued. Whether or not it, it's a complicated answer, so I'll send a memo on that.
Okay. Thank you. Finally, you know, there were a lot of issues raised by bus drivers today. I don't have a thorough list. I'm wondering whether the board has an appetite for either a white paper or a briefing on what the issues are, how we're going about addressing them. I understand, Dr. Savage, that some of these issues are negotiable and cannot be discussed in public at this point. But I do think that, I mean, you know, I've been on this board now almost five years, and I've never seen that kind of representation of any employee group in our boardroom. And I believe they deserve our attention and a public discussion surrounding these issues, please. And finally, I do want to apologize yet again for the comments that I made at the ECCL. My comments were absolutely insensitive, and I do genuinely feel badly that I hurt people's feelings. I was speaking as an individual, not on behalf of the school board. Individuals hailing from Guatemala are most certainly valued members of our community. And I am absolutely committed to doing better now and in the future. Those are my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Skittens?
Okay. I'll run this around. I have a couple of things that I would like to say. The first thing is, and Ms. Patrica just kind of hit on it, that it was the first time we've had that many people show up. I personally believe the culture is changing. I believe the culture in our district is becoming more inclusive and accepting of our employees. Because I agree, I have, you know, even before I got on the board, I never saw employees, bus drivers, you know, employees show up. We've gotten, and you all can agree, we've gotten more emails recently from employees that are not afraid to voice their opinion or say things that are happening. And I really, for one, I want to thank Dr. Savage. And I also want to thank staff for, you know, their part in that as well, as being able to listen and include our staff in everything that, that is going on. That, to me, was very refreshing to see that many people willing and able and not afraid to not just come, but to speak. And if you think about it, in the last couple of months, there were one or two bus drivers that came, and, you know, one or two would stand up there, and then it got to be three or four. They feel safe enough and fearless enough to stand up and say what is wrong. And to me, that is a change for the better. A suggestion that I would have to, I'm not sure, to the chair as well as Dr. Savage, there were a couple of questions that came up, and Dr. Savage says, well, I'm on it and I'll look it up. How do we make sure that people know that it happened? Sometimes at the next meeting, we'll say something. But if there were a mechanism that went out even to, people are going to look at their school website page before they look at the district page. So, if there were a section on Q and A of questions that come up here and the answers that you come up with, a lot of people have the same questions but don't have the whatever to come here and make those questions. So, if we had some way to put it out there, we may not have the same questions coming up all the time because people would know we addressed that. So, I mean, just a thought, just a suggestion. I want to recognize, because I don't know, what's the date of our next meeting? Not before the 15th, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, I do want to recognize National Hispanic Heritage Month. We are still a majority minority, and 40% of our students and families fall within that destination. And I was reading one article about it, and it said, you know, begins on September 15th to celebrate U.S. Latinos, Hispanics, and their history and culture. It started in 1968 by Congress as Hispanic Heritage Week and was expanded to a month in 1988. The celebration begins in the middle rather than the start of September. And I didn't realize this. Why did it start in the middle of the month? Well, here's why. Because it coincides with Independence Days in several Latin American countries. Guatemala, Honduras, El Salvador, Nicaragua, Costa Rica, all celebrate on September 15th, followed by Mexico on September 16th, and Chile on September 18th, Belize, et cetera. So, just a little bit of history about the cultures that make up 40% of our school district. My last comments, well, let me just say them. Each week, we get a vacancy report, and it's the number of staff vacancies. And it's broken down by core subjects and non-core subjects. And each time we get it, I crunch the numbers and see what the percentages are. The last one that we got, the ESOM, had 52% vacancies in core and non-core subjects. South was 27, and West was 19%. And I watched all of Ms. Patrica's presentation that she gave last week, and I'm still trying to find 117% capacity in three schools, Pelican Elementary, Three Oaks Elementary, and Three Oaks Middle. And I sat up half the night one night with, and went all the way back to 2016 and calculated the capacity of those three schools, and I still have not been able to mathematically come up to 117. The ESOM, the most portables, the most vacancies, the widest achievement gap. What are our priorities? And I am not pointing fingers at any staff or anybody. It is a systemic issue that we must face. What are our priorities? And if our priorities are to spend $84 million to build a school when, in my opinion, show me the numbers because I can't find them. Work for equity for all students. And until things are equitable for all students, I'm going to continue to talk about it until someone actually hears me. Many times, I say these things, I was looking back through my notes months back, questions and things that I asked, and it seems as though the tenor is to, it will just, you know, tell her yes and then forget it, and she'll forget about it. I haven't forgotten, and I won't forget. We have a need, not a want. And we need to look at our priorities. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skittens. Ms. Morgan?
First of all, I think since that young man came from Cypress Lake High School to talk about the bathrooms, I think it would be nice if somebody reached out to him and the principal and had a conversation so that he knows, and they know when they come to a meeting and talk to us, we pay attention. I agree. On transportation, I heard things tonight that I was not aware of. I'm pleased that Dr. Savage will be talking with the transportation staff. I think it's important that he give us some information about the issues that they've addressed, if they can be discussed publicly. addressed, if they can be discussed publicly. Because I really felt out of the loop when they were talking. And I do want to say how grateful I am that they came, because I know many of them are up at 4 o'clock in the morning, getting ready to run routes. So, that was a pretty impressive turnout. I am going to ask Dr. Savage to repeat the information he provided this afternoon about the state and the conflict between the state and the federal government with respect to funding, COVID-related funding. And those are my comments this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher, I think Dr. Savage is going to, are you going to do that during your comments?
Let's see if I can locate that article again, the summary piece. I mean, I could do my best to summarize it, but if you want me to read it, again, I'll have to grab the document. Is it just okay to summarize the gist of it?
Sure. Ms. Fisher, have a call. So, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I'm sorry, but I did forget one thing that I wanted to mention. I want to give a special recognition to our employee wellness staff. The opportunities that they are providing with their program has been resulting in savings to the district of an average of $22 million per year for the last eight years. So I think they deserve a hands up for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. And Ms. Morgan, you were completed with yours?
Yes, I was. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay. One thing that I wanted to mention, because it was mentioned by several different speakers, had to do with comments on banned book week. And first of all, the banned books, this is something that's been tracked, might be the American Library Association, I don't remember what group, but for quite a few years. And they come out with a list, a yearly list, that talks about challenged books throughout the nation. And these books have differed over the years. In my prior school district, because I was a high school language arts teacher, I'm very, very familiar with the whole thing, with banned books. The books, I think sometimes people think, oh, it was banned because it's a dirty book, or it's pornographic, and that's not it at all. I mean, it could be, but many times, there are very specific reasons why a book is banned in a particular area, or the word that the association used, challenged book. When I was in Texas, we went through, our whole school district went through a challenge, and actually, it went through the whole North Dallas area at the time of The Adventures of Huckleberry Finn. And that made the news. And that is a book that, if you look historically, it's probably one of the most challenged books. And you would be surprised at some of the other books that appear on lists. For instance, another title that has been challenged many times is To Kill a Mockingbird. Of Mice and Men, that might be a little more specific because of language, but it's not just because of language or mature topics and those kinds of things, violence, that books are challenged. Often, it's because the books have racial stereotypes, things that were challenged, things, you know, if you look at even movies from earlier time periods that are now, not necessarily banned, but have been challenged, or have been, in the case of Disney, like Song of the South, put in the vault. So I just want to be clear. Another one that I listed, the Harry Potter series, which, of course, especially, I don't remember how many years ago, but was extremely popular with kids, and actually got a lot of children into reading because of fantasy, the occult in the Harry Potter. So I wanted to bring that issue up in case some of you misunderstand, and you think, oh, it's on the banned book list, and it's in our schools. No, this is a list for the year of the challenged books. The other thing, there was a mention about doing an audit of all of our library books. That's a Herculean task, to go through every book in every, in every library. Actually, the library books do not, it's our textbooks that go through book adoption. Library books don't go through adoption. I'm not sure now who exactly makes the decisions, because unfortunately, many of our schools, because of funding, have dropped the librarian position, which is now, of course, the media specialist. And I can guarantee that when books are ordered for any library, there's a process, and they're looked at and reviewed. The other thing that you may not be aware of is, many, especially our high schools, don't have any books at all in the library. I was shocked when Bonita Springs High School first opened, and I took a tour, and I happened to know the principal, because I worked with Mr. Estes at Estero High School. And because I was on a very friendly basis with him, and he knows I was an English teacher, I walked in that, and I said, what is this? Where are the books? And he very proudly told me, they're all online. So what you also have to realize, and this is college libraries, local libraries, many of our libraries now have fewer and fewer books, and they rely on the databases. As a matter of fact, college students, and I did the same with my high school, English students, no, you're not going to Google something, you're going to use our databases. So when you say that you're going to do an audit of all the books, it's a little more complicated than that. And I just wanted to try to clarify that just a little bit. The thing that I'm going to bring up next is a motion that I sent yesterday, last night, to the board. We had brief remarks on this motion, some remarks on this motion, earlier today at our briefing meeting. And so I, during our great between meetings, with the help of our board attorney, Ms. Kathy Dupree Bruno, and with input from something that had been written and presented earlier from our board chair, Ms. Debbie Jordan, we came up with a memo. And what I'm going to do is, all of us here on the board, and this was hot off the presses when we started, have a copy of the memo, the memorandum, and also of the motion I'm going to make. I'm going to make the motion, because it refers to a, it refers to a memorandum, I will read the memorandum, and it will be, if it's adopted, it will be put in print, and then I'll reread the motion. So, I move that we, as members of the Lee County School Board, adopt the attached memorandum that reasserts our commitment to uphold the ideals of respect and human dignity for the Guatemalan community and for all underrepresented communities. Here is the proposed memo. Members of the school board of Lee County believe that public schools and elected officials have a responsibility to ensure the highest ideals of education, and that human dignity is upheld at all levels of public education. In that light, we are saddened by the recent public remarks of one of our members. It is important for the public to understand that neither the law nor board policy allow for one individual board member to speak for the entire board. There are seven of us that make up the school board of Lee County. When an individual board member makes comments, those are that person's personal comments, and should not be deemed reflective of the board in its entirety. When the school board speaks, we do so as a united board. We, as members of the Lee County School Board, stand steadfast in our commitment to foster an inclusive educational environment where the Guatemalan community and all underrepresented communities are treated with dignity and respect by all members of the educational community, including their elected representatives. The school board of Lee County is committed to being a world-class school system, and to ensuring that each student, without regard to race, ethnicity, religious belief, national origin, disability, ancestry, socioeconomic status, gender, or sexual orientation, achieves his or her highest personal potential. That is referenced in the motion memorandum. One more time, the motion is, I move that we, as members of the Lee County School Board, adopt the attached, that would be this memorandum I just read, memorandum that reasserts our commitment to uphold the ideals of respect and human dignity for the Guatemalan community and for all underrepresented communities.
Discussion, please. Ms. Skittens?
Two questions I have on the, one, the second line, my copy says inclusion. Did you change that to education?
Did I misread?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I misread.
And I want to be clear that I understand when we say "underrepresented." I'm not quite, quite sure that your definition that you have intended. If you, can she?
Yes, please, could you, Ms. Vaughn?
It means that, you know, we talk often about majority, minority, that sort of thing. Well, within minorities, we spoke about Hispanic majority, minority in this district. Then we have the subdivisions. And that list that's in the third paragraph, without regard to race, ethnicity, and all of that, that comes from policy, and from statute, and from our school policy. So we look at any group that is viewed as a minority group that doesn't get the traditional support of what we have in the past. And I think these terms are becoming archaic, majority.
Well, let me just say, that's the only word that kind of gives me a little bit of angst, and the reason is, it is to say that we, as a district and as a board, have underrepresented people, and parts of our community. And I know, I mean, we've discussed some of the initiatives and some of the things that we're doing to help, like with the language gap and all those types of things. And I'm not sure if "underrepresented" says what I would say. I mean, I don't know, I can't really put it in words. "Underrepresented" sounds like we're not doing something. And I think that we recognize the needs, and that that really doesn't have to do with the situation that we're trying to rectify.
Okay, and if I may-
Yes, please.
-complete the answer, I thought of a good example. I think it's the opposite when I say "underrepresented," meaning the groups themselves. For instance, example, I have been involved with the Haitian-American community for many years, five-plus years. And the first meeting that I ever went to, which was actually about a month or two after the group came into being, one of the reasons that that group formed was because they felt like they didn't have a voice, that it was an invisible demographic, okay? So, an invisible demographic, we could say the same thing about Guatemalans, for instance, because with the Haitians, even on testing and all of that, they are put into the larger group, black. But black, we have African-American heritage, we have those people who are immigrants from Africa, we have island immigrants, or people whose heritage, and so it's the same thing with the Hispanics. We have a plethora of, I would say, underrepresented. I mean, there's, you know, there are certain groups that we know they exist, and then there are other groups that are more invisible demographics. So I'm not looking at it as how we, that we underrepresent them, but they themselves don't have the presence in putting themselves forward the way some other groups do. So that's, and it was language, as I said, that came to being from several of us.
Ms. Skittens? Go ahead. And this probably comes from 1.27, the nondiscrimination.
Did it say "underrepresented" in that one?
Okay. Can I beg the indulgence of the board to ask an opinion, and I'm sorry, I can't remember his last name, he presented to us about the gentleman, what is his name, that presented about the Hispanic at the briefing meeting the other day? Doctor, that's-
Negron?
Negros?
Yes.
Could, would, if Dr. Savage would allow him to weigh in, and his opinion on the verbiage that we have? I mean, I just feel like we need to have some type of a weigh-in on this.
You're speaking on that one word?
Yes, and the-
You're speaking to everyone that's going to have an opportunity to speak on the same thing. So is that what you're concerned about, is that one word? That's what you want somebody to weigh in on?
Primarily, but yeah, I just think it would be good to have someone of Latino, Latina descent, you know, to weigh in on it.
Okay, so let's see what the others say, and then we can, if we still need to do that, then perhaps we can do that. Because that's the only word that's concerning to you.
Whatever.
Is that-
You all, go ahead.
I'm asking you, Ms. Skittens.
Well, no, I said what I was asking. I was asking someone of Latino descent to weigh in on it.
Yes, and if we can have everyone here speak first, and then we can certainly, he's here, so.
But you're saying that if everyone else doesn't want it, then you're not going to do it.
No, I'm not saying that at all. I said, can we hear what everybody else says? And then that way, if there's something else that he may-
That's fine.
...assist with, then that would happen.
That's fine.
If that's okay. Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
I have no comment.
Okay. Ms., thank you. Ms. Javonelli?
Okay, so-
Okay, so, I, I hesitate somewhat because I believe this is a positive thing, and I'm not opposed to anything being, you know, something a positive out of something that was negative that happened. However, it still doesn't address a rogue school board member. And so, I, you know, I was constantly, I mean, I had someone say, "Please, please, please investigate me," you know, and carry on so much about something that I was not doing anything wrong, I was just doing my, being, you know, doing the duty of a school board member, listening to people and without engaging and sending it directly to the superintendent. But yet, I had a fabricated ethics complaint filed against me. And so, that is a board member out of their lane when they're directing staff to do things. This, again, to me, was staff information that was directed, that was information that she was privy to that I wasn't. We built a school in Gateway, I never had any of the information about Gateway, and that was my school. I, you know, I thought about, well, you know, how does she have this information and I don't have the information? How does she have a logo? I don't have the logo. It's not equitable, that's, this is what I've talked about, and this board doesn't hold anyone accountable, not even the superintendent prior administration that allowed us to get in this position to begin with. I mean, I think that's what we need to talk about, you know, you know. I am confident-
We're talking about-
The, the policy, this memorandum.
This memorandum, and, and we, and you're out of order because we are not here to attack one another. We've all been investigated time and time again, and I think we need to move forward. We have a new superintendent-
Please, so, promise.
And we are-
Well, and that's where I was going, because I'd like to finish.
And we are trying to-
I'd like to finish. I don't see how this resolution is going to-
Mr. Pre, Bruno?
Hold on. So, there's a point of order that's been made. Madam Chair, you need to rule on the point of order. Ms. Jivinelli, I think you had said that you had another-
I had another motion.
So, perhaps that's for that conversation, and right now, the motion that's on the table is just whether or not you want to accept this memorandum.
Well, and that's what I was saying, that I don't think it addresses really the real problem. How's that? And so, and, and I wanted, and I wanted to finish because, because I feel confident, and this is what I just wrote down just a few minutes ago, so, I was not, okay, I wanted to finish. I was not privy to the information prior, any additional information prior when building And no one else, I didn't receive additional information that somebody else may have, and I think that's important to note. This is a, a school that she's receiving privy information that we're not receiving. So, however, and to your point, Ms. Fisher, I think that was all the prior administration. And my point, I'd like just to point out is that this is a perfect example of the prior administration not treating each board member equally. And, and I, that was something, I raised those issues numerous times, numerous over the year, over the four years, that I was not getting the same information that everybody else is. Now, with that being said, finally, I am hopeful that board members are being treated equally with, by this new administration. And this is why we must allow him to make the necessary changes needed to do his job and stop the resistance by those that were given preferential treatment and information in the past. So I will support this, if this is the will of the board, and I will withdraw my motion. But we have to do what's right for this community and to get back on track. We cannot have rogue board members acting out, acting out with information and answering questions that I don't have the same information. And that, I'm sorry, doesn't address that in this resolution completely. It just says that they, they can do it because we're, they're allowed to do it, but they don't represent the rest of the board. So, and then, back to my motion, my motion was-
Hold on, hold on, Ms. Jivinelli. We, we have a motion that's on the floor.
Yeah, we have to finish this one first.
That's, that's what all I wanted to say to that. And I was just going to read my motion and probably pull it, but that's, because people wanted to hear that, so.
Well, let's, let's do this one first, and then we can go back if this-
So, Ms. Jivinelli, with regards to the verbiage that is, that is stated here for this memorandum, is, is that acceptable to you? Because Ms. Gittens has, has one thing that we're going to discuss, maybe Dr. Negron can speak on, but is there anything-
May I ask a quick question about that?
Can I, can I finish just asking? So is there anything that, verbiage in here that you're concerned about?
It doesn't really apologize to any community, just says that we're going to make sure that everybody is inclusive. We should be doing that already. We don't need a resolution telling us to do that. I'm sorry. I mean, that's how we, we should be acting to begin with.
Okay, and this is, again, this is not a resolution, this is just a memorandum. So I just want to make sure that that's perfectly clear.
Either way, I'm, I'm saddened that we have to go to this extreme to, to do what's right.
Thank you. And then, Ms. Gittens, I'm going to let you-
Ms. Jordan, I think Ms. Fisher has not had an opportunity yet, though.
Can I, can I just say, may clarify my part of this? Okay. What is the goal of this? Is the goal of this to assuage the Guatemalan community for the hurt that they may have, you know, that they have, that has happened to them by the statements that were made? Or is the goal to, to do something that's going forward? I think we're looking at two different things, and we need to decide that, that either we're going to add something else to this or do two separate things.
I believe this, and I'm, I'm going to refer back to Ms. Vaughn, because my, I'm, my understanding, it is, we could not put a statement out, we could not put a letter out without us all being here at the board and having conversations. So this basically is what I am believing that this is. So, Ms. Vaughn, could you please state more reason for this?
I, I want to state, since this was something that I brought forward in two steps, just for, for the public, last, oh, Wednesday, I think it was Wednesday, Wednesday of last week, after I first heard the comments that were made, I sent a letter and copied the entire board to, my goal was to distance myself, and I basically said, "I want to be on the record that not all board members agree with this." And, and I, I made a statement, just to be on, on the record. I did not go on TV, I did not put it on social media, that was not my goal. I wasn't out to blast anything more on social media, I was just, it was me as a person feeling this. Then what happened the next day, when I sent my original motion, the, the, the response took on a new life because both the news and local, local news, TV and print news, as well as social media, really picked up on this. And I felt that we were in a position that perhaps, and, and I will have to add, that it's another discussion, but that Mrs. Patrica did have the seal of the district behind her. And, and this was one of my motivations. And I, I felt like at that time, it wasn't enough for me just to put this out there to the rest of the board and to go on record such that it was. Because I'm not the kind of person, I'm not out there to be interviewed and, and, and all of that. I did it for my own personal. The goal is not to assuage guilt or, it's not any of that, it's that we are reasserting as a board that we are, and the word that we used, saddened by hearing the remark from one of our members and the idea that anybody who saw that video clip and saw a board member with the seal of the district behind her might think she was speaking for all of us. Now, Ms. Patrica has said, asserted that she was speaking on her own. I'm not dealing with that at all. That's another issue. Can we focus? Let's focus on what this is distancing us as a board and as a district so nobody misconstrues, so nobody believes that this is our statement as a district. Okay? Now, as far as what Ms. Jivinelli said, sure, there can be two steps, but to me, right now, the most important step is for everybody in the public to understand, this isn't what we are all about, and we want to clarify that. That's what this is. And I thought that my motion that said, "reasserts our conviction," and the verbiage here, it seems clear to me. So I hope that clarifies for everybody on the board.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. And, and we did speak about the logo and everything else, that that would come up in our reorg. So that is not, that is still a conversation that we will be having. Ms. Fisher, I apologize, would you please?
Did you rule on my point of order?
Your, did I rule on it? Did I allow her to finish speaking? Sorry.
She, she allowed her to, to finish, and the conversation continued. So at this point, Ms. Fisher, you can make your, your normal comment.
Thank you. I would support this memorandum, and I would say that it reinforces our existing nondiscrimination policy. And then, there are definitions of unrepres, underrepresented groups, it's racial and ethnic groups, individuals with disabilities, individuals from disadvantaged backgrounds. So there are a number of, there are a number of different interpretations regarding underrepresented groups. It could be women in medicine, it could be everybody, anybody who's not the general population. So, it's a broadly used term. And I have another comment, but I'll save that because it's not pertinent to this memorandum.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So, going back to Ms. Gittens with the, the word "underrepresented," what would you like to, to see happen with that, please?
I believe I already said I would like to get a opinion.
Doctor Savage, would you?
Just respectfully, you know, just knowing the, the gravity of kind of the, the situation and the, and the very topic of what we're even discussing today, and in a, really not wanting to reinforce any potential tokenism or just, you know, at all in any way identifying a person who simply is a member of a group, I would not want to subject any individual on demand in a public meeting to have to carry the weight of having to assert an opinion on that matter. I would say that it's very serious and potentially personal. And so respectfully, if the board would like a written evaluation of a particular term, I'm happy to assign that to staff, and I'm sure folks are more than happy to, to weigh in. But just as a matter of what I would expect of any of the staff, I would never want to subject anyone to that individually. So I would say I'd be happy to provide, given time, a written evaluation of that by qualified staff members together collectively, if that's necessary, if the term is questionable and if a suitable replacement can't be done. Of course, the board directs otherwise, but that's my position as a recommendation to the team.
Thank, I appreciate that as well. I agree with you. So, hearing that, Ms. Gittens, is there a, a different word that you would want to see there?
I, I guess, I, I feel that in the statement itself, you explain race, ethnicity, religious beliefs, and all of that, disabilities, et cetera. I just, I, it's up to the will of the board. I just don't feel that "underrepresented" just says what we need to say. And, you know, all due respect, I will follow what superintendent says. I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot. I, I just, anyway. If that's what everybody wants to say, I, I just, it just doesn't, the words, it doesn't sit well with me.
Thank you. Ms., Mr. Pre, Bruno, and then I'll come to you.
So, let me ask Ms. Vaughn a question. Ms. Vaughn, I, the "underrepresented," I think, comes up one time in that first sentence in the third paragraph. So if we take out that word and just put, "where the Guatemalan community and all communities are treated with dignity and respect by all members..."
I will accept that and withdraw my suggestion.
Because honestly, you know, for the school system, it's really all communities that need to be respected with dignity, and so, and then we have our discrimination language, anti-discrimin, discrimination language after that sentence. So that makes it very clear, too.
Thank you, attorney.
Well, and you, you asked me, am I, can I answer that?
Yes, please.
This is not my, it's my motion, this is not necessarily my memo. I had a, a draft, I took some of the very, I, I took some specific language from the Florida School Board Association letter that, that we received. Ms. Jordan had said something, and we took some language from that, you contributed. So it was, you know, we had all of an hour and 20 minutes to pull it together, get it typed and, and copied. It's, it's the will of the board. I like the "underrepresented," I explained what it means to me. I'd like to hear-
Okay, so, if I could go back-
-from others on, on that. But again, it's not, it's my motion, but it's up to the board. If they want a memorandum, and this isn't the right verbiage, I would like to hear from everyone what would make it right.
Thank you. So, Ms., Ms., I'm going to go back down the line here. Ms. Morgan?
And I'm going to ask the board attorney to read again what the recommendation she made.
The recommendation would be just to take out the "underrepresented." So it would read, "We, as members of the Lee County School Board, stand steadfast in our commitment to foster an inclusive educational environment where the Guatemalan community and all communities are treated with dignity and respect by all members of the educational community, including their elected representatives." And then we would keep that last sentence. "The school board of Lee County is committed to being a world-class school system to ensuring, a world-class school system and to ensuring that each student, without regard to race, ethnicity, religious, et cetera."
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. And then, Ms. Gittens, you already stated that that was fine with you?
Yes, that is fine with me to take that out.
Okay, and Ms., Ms. Vaughn?
If that's the will of the board, I'm fine with it.
Ms. Patrica?
I'm fine with that as well, but if an amendment is to be made, I would ask that it also be deleted from the motion itself. The last part of the motion refers to unrepresented, underrepresented communities as well, so it might make sense to be consistent.
And that's what I was talking about in the first place.
Otherwise, I too am, am happy to follow the will of the board.
And Ms. Jivinelli?
Well, that's exactly-
Because you keep saying "all is all."
Yeah, that, that, when you went to her and said to me, that was what I was going to say, is just take out "underrepresented," so, in both places.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Jivinelli. Ms. Fisher?
We move "underrepresented" in both places, the motion and the memorandum.
Okay. So then, we would have to go back to Ms. Vaughn to restate her motion or amend her motion.
Let's make it easy. Ms. Vaughn, my recommendation is withdraw your motion and then restate it.
All right, before I do that, I, I want to smooth this because we, we, we're already too late, we're all, we're pretty late in, in doing this. I really don't want to amend the motion, and I'll tell you why. Because in the memo, it lists after that, it clarifies the kinds of groups that we're talking about- talking about. It gives a list. It does not end the motion. I think it helps to make the motion clear. You know, let's face it, when we talk about the, somebody mentioned the general populace or population or something to that in that way. I will withdraw it and then I will amend it only, I like the way it was the first time, but I will, just so we can get this show on the road with this. It seems like we have another board member with another motion that might be step two or not. I will withdraw that motion. May I make another motion, Madam Chair?
Okay. I just want to make sure again, we're not going to go through the amendment. We're just going to withdraw and you're going to restate the motion the way that you want.
With the changed language.
Okay, so, then restate the motion.
Please restate it.
Do I need to second the withdrawal?
Yes, we have to, we're doing the whole thing again.
You don't have to second the withdrawal. She withdrew, now she's going to restate her motion.
I'll read it now. The amended. "I move that we, as members of the Lee County School Board, adopt the attached memorandum," footnote, it has a change also, "that reasserts our commitment to uphold the ideals of respect and human dignity for the Guatemalan community and for all communities."
Second.
Okay. So, at this time, we have public comments? Is that correct?
Any further discussion by the board on this? Okay, with no further discussion, now we move to public comment.
Okay. Is there anyone out there that would like to speak on the memorandum? And what is the time for that?
Thank you, Board Member Vaughn, for having a moral compass and presenting your motion. This board should not even be in a position where you should have to present such a motion. That being said, Board Member Giavanelle, you're the only board member that stated publicly what has been going on in this district for years. Three board members and the board attorney have been abused by this woman for years. The fact that five other board members did not use this opportunity to validate what Ms. Giavanelle said just shows a lack of moral fiber to right this wrong so that this board can become a functioning board. The community can clearly surmise that they refuse to acknowledge the wrongdoings of the District III board member. This board will not change until the District III school board member is gone, followed by a few others that support her habitual insidious behavior. The ethics complaint that I filed against Board Member District III contains information that is concurrent with what Mrs. Giavanelle stated, and I figured all of this out by watching YouTube videos. I alleged then and I allege now that the District III board member misuses her power because of her need to control. Ms. Giavanelle, stick to your guns and make your motion. This community is begging, begging for change on this board. And that is why we are not backing down, in case you haven't noticed. If anybody here would like a copy of the ethics complaint, please let me know. I'll be happy to share it with everybody. It's a disgrace. You need to resign, Patrica.
Just a reminder about the personal attacks.
Tara Jenner. There was a great deal of discussion when the Bill of Rights to the U.S. Constitution was being drafted and whether or not it should actually come into play. For those of you who are students of history and the Constitution, you'll know there were the Federalist Papers and the Anti-Federalist Papers. And one of the biggest concerns that the Anti-Federalists had was that by creating a Bill of Rights, you would basically be giving the government the authority to be able to define and redefine what it is that those rights were, and they could actually become a more dangerous document than by leaving it alone and leaving it to the rights to begin with. In this particular case, we're looking at a very similar, slightly different, but a similar kind of thing. You have a policy on how to act and behave and be respectful with one another. There's really no need to have another memorandum to restate what's already been stated in the first place. What needs to be done is enforcement of those responsibilities that are, those individuals that are sitting on the dais to begin with. To state a new, or restate the same thing over and over again, what have we said about that? Doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result is the definition of insanity. Something needs to change. And what needs to change is accountability, personal accountability by those who made the comments that resulted in this entire discussion from the get-go. Without that personal accountability, you are sending a signal to the children in our school district that they can do whatever they want to, and a passive assari just because they're caught at something is going to be sufficient to allow them to get away with whatever it is they want to do. I do commend you guys for modifying the language in this proposed memorandum to include everybody. What a concept. If not, what we're doing is just discriminating against another group of people, which kind of flies in the face of the whole let's not discriminate concept of the memo to begin with. Ms. Giavanelle, stick with your guns. Go forward with your motion. We are behind you because we recognize there needs to be accountability. When someone behaves the way that's been done by the District III board member, Ms. Patrica, she needs to be called out for it.
Christine Divageli, Power to Parrot. So, I have a couple of things. First, I'd like to know why we needed that five-minute recess. Everybody in here, most everyone, sitting on the dais right now, had very strong opinions about a certain board member's comments prior to today's meeting, prior to even probably that five-minute recess that we had. Did we make a deal back there? Is that why everyone has a different change in opinion now? Is that why everyone is so docile now? Where are the pitchforks that you had before? Like, where's the justice? Where's the accountability and the transparency that I heard from so many of you before? Seems like everyone is now hiding, afraid of one board member like we typically are in this meeting. I would really love it if the people sitting behind the dais right now that we have elected and placed in these positions of power to do the will of the people that elected them, do the will of the people now. You had a, you had a mass of people outside today protesting peacefully, requesting the resignation or termination of District III board member. I'm not sure why they are not being represented currently. Something has been asked of the board today. We have asked you, the public has asked you, to act. That does not mean to make a memorandum or a resolution, that you're going to abide by ethical standards. Like, that's your job. That is not what we're asking you to do today. We're asking you to take real action and demand that you do your job. Another board, another person brought up today and the board member sitting up there, that you guys have an ethical responsibility to terminate that particular district board member. An ethical responsibility. Why are you ignoring that right now? Why is that just a moot point? Why is it that this particular board member cannot even stop scribbling for five seconds and look at us when we speak to her? It is super disrespectful, and it is the same type of disrespect that caused her to say the things that she said in that interview that day. That's not the only interview. Let's talk about the Beach Radio interview where she encouraged underage drinking of her own children. Is that also the board's stance? Since we're, since we're sitting here and we're going to put in a memorandum all of the things that this particular board member does that are not right, maybe we have to include underage drinking, that that is not a position that the board takes, too. Or maybe we could just stop dealing with this altogether and get rid of the problem.
Robert Roper, Ward Cleaver. I'm conflicted because, for one, I feel badly that District III made a serious misjudgment, an error. I've been praying for District III's representative all day because that's what I'm called to do. However, consider the precedent that will be set if action is not taken. Because if this were a principal or a teacher or any other employee representing the district or not, even on social media, the repercussions would be great. And if it's okay not to do it there, then it's okay not to do it here. But just consider the need to be consistent one way or the other.
Yeah, you're kind of making this way too complicated. Pretty much everyone's in agreeance on like a couple of simple things. Can you just like, like, okay, District III said something, or District III's representative said something that they should not have that painted a very clear picture of someone we do not want on the school board. Plenty of people on the school board have said they don't want District III's representative on the school board anymore. As far as the other thing we were talking about before, with the including all minorities or underrepresented communities, just say communities, there's no problem. You don't have to worry about that. Oh, so it's in the memo? I don't know, just scribble over it or something. You're making this way too complicated.
I'm confused on how in the past, you can sit here at one meeting and say that the board represents itself as a whole, but when one of your board members makes racist comments, then you are claiming that you don't represent each other. You make comments as individuals. If you have a Lee School District seal behind you, wouldn't that mean you are representing the School Board of Lee County? Ms. Giavanelle is the only person that is willing to address the actual situation at hand. Please don't back down.
Are there any other comments? See, no other comments. We will now take a vote. And this will be a hand vote. Is that correct, Ms. Thomas? Okay. And I'm just going to go down the line. All in favor, Ms. Morgan? Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes, with the changes.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Ms. Giavanelle?
Yes, with the changes.
Yes.
Ms. Fisher? And yes, with the changes. Motion passes, and we will get this out. Ms. Vaughn? Did you have any other comments, Ms. Vaughn? Because this was part of your comments.
I'm going to comment on something that one of the speakers said, which is, I really resent the implication, or actually, it wasn't even an implication, it was, well, I'll say implication, that a deal was made during the break. Absolutely not. And that's all I need to say on that.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. I will go back to Ms. Giavanelle. Did you have something else to add before I do my comments and move on to the?
I'll, okay, so I'm going to finish with my motion then. So, I'm making the following motion that we need to conduct a full investigation into the actions of Ms. Patrica, Ms. Patrica's continued abuse of power. Also, I'm requesting that we censor Ms. Patrica when she represents the school district as, as we are a collegial board, and she needs to inform us about her agenda and what she will be saying when she speaks to different communities. I don't really know, and maybe the board would like to discuss that and what that should, you know, but I, I think we just have to be very cautious, and I don't know how do we continue to allow her having conversations that we know nothing about, and that's the concern and the information without us knowing about it, so.
Mr. Prey Bruno?
So, Ms. Giavanelle, I heard two motions and what she said. Motion for investigation on abuse of power, is that one?
Yes.
And then, I heard a motion to censor with regards to, I'm not sure, speaking on school board. Can you elaborate on that one a little bit?
First of all, I don't, we never really know when she's speaking, so I don't know how you handle that and not, and I normally would not have cared before because other board members, I'm sure, speak, and it hasn't been an issue or it hasn't shown up in the media. So, I think that's the question is, as a board, you know, when we have a speaking engagement that pertains to the board, should we know about it beforehand and be aware of it? So, that's really the conversation. Does it need to be a motion? I don't know. I, I think that's the conversation. I know everybody wanted to wait till November, but I mean, honestly, this is in our face right now. By the time, we always kick stuff down the road. And I think addressing it now and owning it, it's a mistake. We need to own it because how else do you move on from something? I say this all the time, I feel like a broken record. But how can we move on from something without correcting it, making those corrections? How did we get here? How did we get here today? And how do we not get here tomorrow? I mean, that's just all it is for me. It's not particular, it happens to be a particular action of what was said by a board member, and that wasn't appropriate, and now we all feel that it, we know it's not appropriate. But unfortunately, it could happen again if we don't, if we don't stop it now. And what that, how to stop it is something that, as a collegial board, I think we should decide together. I don't think it should be Melissa Giavanelle's decision. I don't believe in that. I do believe in being a team as much as possible.
Okay. So, Ms. Giavanelle, because we kind of went into discussion. So, there's a motion on the floor, motion, motion for an investigation on abuse of power. Is there, do you need a second? Is there a second? So, at this point, Madam Chair, you have a discussion.
I think I've said everything. I mean, it's getting to be 9:05. So, I mean, I've said why, everybody understands why. I don't need, I don't think I need to reiterate that. I just think that we need to just deal with it, and we can say we dealt with it as a board. That's really what we need to be doing as a team.
So, and I'm going to ask for discussion, too, but so who are you asking to investigate? The, and what is the, which abuse of power? Because I know we're going to have that conversation. I wanted to bring that up, but everybody, people had said to bring it to November 3rd regarding the
I understand.
The use of the seal and all of that. So, I guess, as far as clarity for conversation?
I'm okay with asking the superintendent, so this is probably changing my motion, but asking the superintendent to do a full investigation into the actions of Ms. Patrica and the abuse of power and the information she received. So, I mean, that might sum it up.
Well, I don't, Mr. Prey Bruno, can Dr. Savage investigate?
Well, then, we, okay, then we have.
So, we've had this discussion many times with regards to investigating board members. Ms. Giavanelle does have the right to bring forth her motion. And it's my understanding that the motion is for an investigation on abuse of power by board member in District III. So, and there was a second. So, at this point, you, it's the same discussion that you guys have had before in terms of whether or not this board will investigate its own members. In the past, you have said that you are not going to do that, and that was basically the protocol and the policy that you had, that you do not investigate board members. The superintendent does not have the power, as we know, to investigate the board. So, if there's going to be So if there's going to be an investigation, it will have to be an external investigator.
Okay.
The only other person that can investigate will be the governor through the OIG, so you guys have had this discussion before.
Okay, so, comments? Ms. Gittens? The issue for me is the systemic behavior. I've been on the board, you know, I guess here for three years, like some of the rest of you, and it's, I can only speak for what I have endured and what I have seen, and the behavior is systemic. And it's, what has happened with me is, it's a control issue that if I do not do or say what certain board members think I should do or say, then there is a underground attempt to censor me. And like I have said before, I wish I had some of the information about the district as all the other board members have, or that Ms. Patrica has. I would love to know what's going on in my district to the depth and breadth that she does in a timely manner, and not after the fact. The investigation of Ms. Giovinelli, it came up over and over again, we need to do this, we need to do this, and the board said no, and then she went around us and did it with someone outside of the district. The water marking, and at first it was, no, it didn't happen, and then it was, yes, it did happen. I mean, it's just, to me, it's systemic, and I don't know, I don't know what investigating would mean. I just feel that we have to get a handle on behavior of potentially rogue board members that do and think what they want and maneuver situations, because Ms. Patrica's here for four years. She just got reelected. I may not be, somebody else may not be, or I may be back, who knows? But for the people that are here, are we going to continue to say, oh, it's okay? To me, the behavior is just not okay. Some of the investigations of the rest of us are just, it's just not okay. It's not okay to me. So I don't know the answer to what we do, but I do feel there's, if we don't get a handle and some sanctions, then what's to stop everybody else from doing that as well? What's to stop me from doing the same thing? We should, you know, and what irritates me more than anything is, board members say, we are a team, and we, no, we're not. Some people know things and do things and participate in things, and others are not privy and not allowed. I cannot tell you how many times, in one way or the other, I was told to stay in my lane. But the whole highway is the lane for other board members. So I'm sorry, but I just feel like something has to be done, or we will continue to go down the same road until we figure it out.
Ms. Morgan, and then Ms. Fisher, please.
I'm going to let Ms. Fisher go first.
So, our student speaker before said, get over it. We're making this way too complicated, and we are. We have been investigated ad nauseam by the Ethics Department, by the Department of Education, and then basically the message is, people, this is your problem, fix it. Do you not get those letters as the chair?
Sure.
Okay. So, you know, we have a mission and a vision, and in my opinion, it revolves around children. And my question is, where are the children in all this? We have board members that are consistently infighting publicly. It's embarrassing, it's humiliating, it's inappropriate, it's unprofessional, and it's unethical. Mrs. Gittens, you sent a letter to the governor and had us all investigated. How many times do we need to be investigated?
No, ma'am, point of order, I did not.
Excuse me, I'm talking now.
Ms. Gittens?
This is the last time anyone's going to interrupt.
Well, then do not make accusations.
Ms. Gittens, please allow Ms. Fisher to finish her speech.
I'll finish, thank you. So, we can keep playing this game over and over again. We have rules about public speaking. We do not enforce them. People are allowed to get up and attack publicly and criticize, and that's okay, because we don't enforce our rules. So why do you think anyone should pay attention to us or have respect for us as a governmental body? And we are not a team, you're correct. Because we are all working on our own agendas and not focusing on the business of the district, which is what the purpose of this meeting that we've been here for three hours and 13 minutes now to do. And I think, as the senior board member, I need to say, it's a waste of time, and we look like a bunch of ridiculous women. We are intelligent, educated people, with good hearts, with families who are embarrassed by us, and I think it is time for us to take a look at ourselves and stop attacking one another and get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Morgan?
So I would have to follow that, follow her by saying that, yes, we look bad. We don't look bad because of one board member. We look bad because of each one of us. So let's stop beating on one board member, let's stop letting the public pick out the token board member they're going to beat on, and let's do our job, and let's put this conversation to bed.
Ms. Patrica, and then I'll come back to you, Ms. Gittens.
I would go back to Attorney DePree Bruno. I don't know that it's appropriate for me to engage in the discussion or the vote on this, because it is about me. Am I correct?
I would agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens? Okay, I have one comment, which I have said pretty much at every meeting, pretty much twice a month. I represent the East Zone, the most portables, the most vacancies in staff, and the widest achievement gap. So if I'm talking about myself, I don't know where. I say it over and over and over again, and I feel I am representing children and staff in what I say. When I sent the letter to the governor, I did not name any one of you. I didn't name any department. I named situations. I named the largest number of portables, the most vacancies, the widest achievement gap. And I will sing that song until I can't sing it anymore. If I have to sing it from the microphone back there, I will continue to say it. It has nothing to do with my ability to get along with people. And trust me, in three years, the way I've been treated by the people up here, I think I do know how to get along with people. Again, portables, vacancies, and widest achievement gap. Tell me what has been done about that.
Ms. Vaughn? Regarding the motion, the motion to, the motion for abuse of power, please, and thank you.
On abuse of power? It's laughable to hear some of the comments and where they're commenting from. Let's, I'm going to cut to the chase here. First of all, Ms. Fisher, you're the senior board member, you've been on the board the longest, but if you've been on the board 100 years, and I've been on the board three days, we have equal votes, okay? What has happened on this whole abuse of power? Yeah, I see, personally, my observations have been, yeah, Ms. Patrica's guilty of that, but so are a couple of other board members. And I think where it emanates from is the culture in the school district. And the culture in this school district with the prior administration was that certain board members could go to the prior superintendent and, yes, be privy to information, whether they went through the channels of asking, oh, can I talk to this chief, that chief, this executive director? We have people here that, because they think that longevity equals special privilege, that they can ask for favors. I'm not going to bring up all of the special favors that some board members have gotten. And if that's not abuse of power, I don't know what is. I'm really tired of hearing, you know, my district, my district is, yeah, well, my district and all of our district is Lee County, and I do believe, and when I was campaigning four years ago, or however many years ago it was, yeah, I was out in Lehigh, and I've heard other people say it's the stepchild. And yeah, I believe that there are too many pieces of information that Mrs. Patrica has been privy to in Astero, especially in the village of Astero. We have, when we talk about abuse of power here, it's not limited to Mrs. Patrica, although I would say she is pretty high on the list as guilty. And going into our new superintendent's office and making demands, and other board members making demands. I don't want to say be me me, but I'm going to say, maybe I've been the stupid one, the really stupid one on this board, because the power has not gone to my head, like, whoa, I can go in and ask anybody in this school district, I want this, I want to see that, my district, I want to be, that's not what we're here for. So if you want to cut to the chase, board members that have asked for special favors for relatives, for special favors for their particular district to help their campaign, special favors to make them feel better about themselves and their own self-worth. Although I feel that Mrs. Patrica is guilty, I don't know how I can support this without pulling in several other people that I know, especially in the prior climate, and now maybe grasping up the ladder and having to cut deals to be, oh, let's, I won't bother you anymore, I won't be bad anymore, let's hug and make up. Is that really, is that what we're talking about? It is bull. The whole board, I'm really, really sorry to say that, but I cut to the chase, and if we investigate Ms. Patrica, I see other people going back years on special favors, on special deals, on going in and harassing our superintendent, harassing other of our And that's all I have to say on abuse of power.
Whew, okay. Again, my question would be, who would be doing this investigation? So in stating this, where do we, I need to know how that would work for us? Because do I believe that what was said was right? Absolutely, I don't believe that that was correct. But as far as the logo, and I question that logo too, the logo is not trademark, which I think we should try to do that, so anybody can use that trademark, which is very concerning to me. So, and this is why we really need to have this conversation on, what does it look like for us when we're out there and we're speaking and we're the liaison and everything? That conversation definitely has to come back. So Mr. DePree Bruno, I don't know if you can shed some light on how that would work before I close and go to public comments?
The administration cannot investigate a board member. If the board chooses to have an external investigator, that's within your purview. The only person that can investigate would be the governor, most likely through the Department of Education's OIG office. The board cannot remove a board member. Board cannot terminate a board member, cannot fire a board member. Only person that can remove a board member is the governor, so.
Thank you. So Ms. Giovinelli, and then Ms. Fisher.
So, this isn't about removing a board member. This is about us acting as a board. And how are we going to do that? I mean, if we, if we're continually having another board member compromise the board like this, so do we set boundaries as a board? Do we set guidelines, and then they're not followed, but yet when somebody else might step out of protocol, they're reprimanded for not telling everybody about the motion prior to that might happen at the night, that night of, that comes up at that point in time? So I mean, my point is, we just, we do need to address our situation. We can't, my motion is to get your attention, that we have to be better. I mean, my concern is, in three weeks, we could be back here at the same dais with the same issues, and we didn't learn from this moment in time. So the only way to move on is to own it and do better. And so, I mean, my concern is a couple of things that I brought up in my speech tonight, and I'm going to come back around to that, because it's really important. We know for a fact, we were told before Dr. Atkins left, there was a board member harassing and bullying his staff. We know for a fact that our board attorney felt harassed, and Dr. Atkins, Dr. Atkins, excuse me, Dr. Savage has told me personally, Dr. Savage, tell me how your conversations go with Ms. Patrica when you have your meetings. Please. And I need for you to be truthful and honest. How long are your, how long are your meetings with Ms. Patrica? And I'll tell you how long mine are.
Can I call, can I, yeah, call something on that? That is really, I don't think that's fair to put our employee.
My point is, it's abuse of power. Because I talked to him for 45 minutes, he gives me his information, just like I did with Dr. Atkins, it never, has never changed. I don't cut backroom deals. I never have.
Do we really want to put our superintendent on the stage? Point of order, this is out of order. I'm going to try this one more time, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you.
Point of order. We are continuously attacking one another to no positive outcome.
But we're going to be
We're going to be in the same boat in three weeks, and now, or a month. Because we keep feeding it.
I know.
We need to stop this and decide as a team that we're going to stop this now, look for the positives, look at our vision and mission, look at, our district seal is available to all of us on our personal stationery, and it is available to us, you just have to go online and you can get it. All you have to do is ask if you want the Zoom backdrop. I mean, that is not a big deal.
I mean, that is not a big deal. As far as information to the board, as far as I know regarding building of schools, we have gotten our information here at the table with our capital and budget updates in a very timely manner. Every few months, we get an update and the information is there. If we're paying attention, we hear it and we know it and we remember it. So that's all I'm going to say.
Okay, but I've never received a PowerPoint from a school. So that was not, not given to us. That PowerPoint that she has was never given to us.
Did you ask for it?
Didn't know it existed.
Did you watch the planning and zoning board meeting in Astero?
Nope.
So that you could know that it existed?
Not until after the fact. You had it before that.
Okay.
I did not.
Okay, ladies, ladies.
So through the chair, so hold on a second. So board, you guys are in crisis, I got to tell you. You decided, I think, either yesterday or this morning or during our briefing to, I think it was yesterday, to try to find somebody local to help the board with, you know, the board counseling or, you know, I think Lee was who you were going to use and then you changed it because you wanted somebody local. I think you need to get somebody as soon as possible to be able to try to help work through some of these, these issues that are, that are happening on the board. And be able to...
No, and we did have that and we do have that still waiting to, wait for Mr. Lee to call me back. However, I think where we got here, it wasn't because of a presentation regarding the school or anything else, it was because of the comments that were made. That's what this whole thing became so real. And I think that we're going, you know, to a whole nother range.
And Chair, I apologize if I got out of my board attorney lane, but at this point, you have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded, you had a discussion. You need to open it up to public comment and then take the vote.
No, I did not have, I did not have my say in it. So that's why I did not have any, an opportunity to speak because everyone else was speaking.
Sorry.
So that's why I was saying, we did not, it was not because of the power, it was because of comments that were made. So that's where I'm having some issues and where is that going? So I will call that and we will open it up to public comments. Anyone would like to speak, please step to the microphone. And please state your name and you have three minutes.
Ally Locke. I think we've made it evident that at this point, an investigation needs to take place. If you have nothing to hide, you should have nothing to be worried about. It should be our right as citizens to encourage you to please investigate the board. And for those of you that have been on the board for a very long time, clearly what is going on right now is not working. Nothing you have been, nothing you have done has been working. So why not take it to the investigation? It is very clear that one board member specifically is doing a lot more than the rest of you. Now, if there are others that are not doing the right things, then yes, you should be investigated. Ms. Vaughn, it's not often that I agree with you, but I agree wholeheartedly with your comments tonight. And I appreciate you speaking out. Ms. Gittens, I appreciate you speaking out. Ms. Giovinelli, I appreciate you speaking out. This board needs to be investigated. And I'll say it one more time. If you have nothing to hide, you have nothing to worry about.
Kristine Divageli, I hate to sound like a broken record up here, but I'm going to because apparently unless we all say the same thing to you over and over again, it just falls on deaf ears otherwise. An investigation needs to be done on all of the board members in question. It needs to be done with the governor's office. It needs to, we're not, we don't need to wait for Mr. Lee and have just more of the same going on right now. There have been obvious, obvious occurrences from a specific few, I'm not even going to just put this on one board member right now, because it's not just one. We all know it's three, sometimes four. The same three that are up here arguing with the public tonight, the same three that in every meeting want to shut us up, the same three that look for every opportunity available to rip the rights of parents away from them. And you can stare at me all day long with your eyeballs. It doesn't matter to me if you don't intimidate me. I'm a member of the public. And the reason I'm up here is to implore you to do the right thing. If you don't have anything to hide, you won't have anything to worry about. But we know you have lots of skeletons in your closet. And that's why you don't want anyone to know. Guess what? Some of you are not even going to be sitting up here this time next year. What is an investigation going to hurt? It's not going to hurt anyone except for the at-fault parties. Where is the transparency? Where is the accountability? All of these things that you sit here, where's the respect? That's your motto for this month, is respect. Respect others, respect us. We're begging, begging for accountability. We are begging for transparency. We are begging for our rights not to be stripped from us every single time we stand behind this microphone. Please do something. Vote for the right thing for once, please. We sit here, meeting after meeting, for months now. And you know how many meetings we leave here? Defeated because you never vote for the right things. You passed millions of dollars in agenda items tonight without even a second look because you knew you had to get to this part of the meeting and you didn't want to take too much time. That is ridiculous. It is unacceptable. Do the right thing, please, for the members of our community, for our children. The Band-Aid is off the gashing wound. The blood is spewing out. We have wanted to know for a very long time where the children have been in all of this for you. It has been three or four of you that have not had the children's interest in all of this. We are here because of the children. And the reason that many of you have investigated other people was to investigate them falsely to create problems and maintain control. Request that the governor conduct an investigation based on the last three or four years or however many years you need to go back and get down to what all of the abuses that have occurred. After 30 years of being on the board, you should have had the capacity of having handled this situation a long time ago. So I don't even know what you're talking about now. Some of you are not looking at yourselves because you don't have the capability to reflect. And you're right, there is more than District Three that abuses their power. Seven, four, and one fall into that category. And I say again that this abuse of power has been against Mrs. Giovinelli, Mrs. Gittens, Mrs. Vaughn, Attorney Bruno, and Superintendent Savage. You think we can't see while we're sitting here what is going on? Mrs. Giovinelli, you can't fix people who can just not control themselves. They're not going to change. Stick to your guns. Don't leave the Band-Aid on the gashing wound. Fix it now or it's not going to be fixed. These board members should be calling for investigations on themselves.
Tara Jenner. This is what I would say. This whole scenario dealing with the Guatemalan comments by the District Three board member, Ms. Patrica, was the proverbial straw that broke the camel's back. And the reason that made such a big wave was because it was dealing with one of our minority groups. Whereas a vast majority of the time, she tends to attack those individuals who are not in a minority group because she recognizes that we're not going to be as vulnerable when it comes to consideration. I was at a town hall meeting that she had a few months back in Astero where she gave a lot of individuals an opportunity to ask multiple questions. But when Ms. Nyström, who just spoke now, went to speak, she got up to introduce herself to give her credentials so that Ms. Patrica and those in the audience would know from where she was coming. And Ms. Patrica literally got in her face and started cramming the microphone in her face going, ask a question, ask a question, and was being extremely rude. And point blank said to her, I don't read your emails because they're mean. What kind of representation is that when a board member specifically talks to somebody who resides in her district, takes the time to come to the meetings and be informed and involved, and is told, I'm not even going to read your emails because I think they're mean? Interestingly enough, I copied on almost every one of those emails. And the only thing that's mean about them is they speak the truth and they're factual and they don't go in favor of what that board member wants to have accomplished. And I agree. The board may not have the ability to remove anybody, but this either needs to be elevated to the governor, not a local person, or District Three board member Patrica could save us an awful lot of time and money and effort and just resign on her own accord and acknowledge that this is a time period when she needs to cut and move on somewhere else because she's made a number of errors along the way that are egregious and they need to have her take personal accountability and responsibility for and be able to exemplify and to show to the students in this district that you're accountable for your actions and your words and your behavior and your tone of voice and everything else.
Yeah, this is just a slight clarification. I was slightly misunderstood. I meant that you are wasting time, not that the matter at hand is a waste of time. It's a very important matter. It's just, it's been like, what is it, three hours or something now? Most of it's been dedicated to this one thing. And a lot of it, it does not take three hours to call a vote and say you're for it or against it. On, as well as just another thing. What Ms. Patre, what Ms. Patricia, Patrice, I forgot. Whatever, District Three, yeah. Said that started this whole thing not only displays prejudice, but also ignorance to, in what is actually going on in the schools, considering that she thought that was the biggest issues principals have to face. And as someone who is in school right now, I can tell you that is not it at all. There are tons of problems that take way more priority. So extreme prejudice and she has no idea what's going on with the very thing the job is about. So, yeah.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Ms. Gittens, you have one?
My only last comment is that I said before that I feel that certain things that happen are systemic. And I go back to when I gave policy and line and number as to Ms. Patrica being out of her purview. And all the rest of you did was just vote unanimously to retroactively make her a liaison. To me, that spoke volumes. There was no comment about, you know, not doing it. It's just that, oh, she's doing such a fabulous job. Let's forget about protocol and statute and let's just retroactive. I just think there needs to be some investigation. And as far as the governor's situation, don't think that it's over. And I didn't name any of you. I named situations. And our attorney gave all of you a copy to read. There was no one's name in it, but just, just don't think it's over.
Again, and I would, I'm not sure where Mr. Pre-Bruno just went to, so...
She had to step away for just a second. She'll be right back.
Okay. Because again, I'm going to ask how with this motion, and I'm sorry, Ms. Giovinelli, could you please repeat your motion and, and where you believe that's going? Because I know I have to call the question. Yeah. Ms. Fisher?
If we take the vote and see that the motion passes, we can work on the details.
Well, I would prefer to wait for our, the attorney to get back and then we will do that. And then Ms. Giovinelli, I'm going to ask you to repeat that when she gets here, exactly what you would like it to, Mr. Pre-Bruno, I'm just getting ready to ask Ms. Giovinelli to restate her motion. Ms. Giovinelli?
I move to conduct a full investigation into the actions of Ms. Patrica and her continued abuse of power.
One second.
One second. Okay, and I will then, we've already had discussion. So if we could go down, it's a hand vote. So we will go down the line.
I will not support the motion.
Ms. Vaughn?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Oh, you cannot vote.
I'm going to abstain based on conflict of interest. And will you assist me in filing whatever needs to be filed with the minutes, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Is that a sufficient oral explanation?
Oh, it's clear it's a conflict of interest, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Yes.
And Ms. Fisher?
No.
And I will not. So motion does not carry. Was there, is there anything else, Ms. Giovinelli?
No, I will leave it at that. I will send the motion to you both, just so you have it for the record. Okay, so you'll have it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just like to, because we still haven't gotten to the comments, we have a couple more comments and we're, it's done. Thank you to everyone who has been here throughout the evening and especially to staff who has been here with us. We really appreciate that. But I also want to thank all of those who participated in the surveys and in the two days stakeholder meetings for the superintendent's search. And I'd also ask, especially because we were talking about parents' rights and parents this evening, I would ask parents to please talk to your children regarding TikTok. There's a lot of things that are going on out there where they're destroying your property and posting it up. And we really don't want our, our children to be doing that. And then the, the other thing that has taken place is the slapping of teachers. This has been going on. I know there were three teachers that were slapped in one day. And I just think that that is definitely not appropriate for our children to be doing. I know my children better than ever do anything like that. And I, and I do want to say that we are a very diverse community. And, you know, we need to make sure that when we do speak, no matter where it's at, that we are speaking to everybody with respect and dignity. Again, as I stated, I don't agree with how some of the things came out. And... And something that my granddaughter said, and she's 10, and she made this statement to me because she as well watched the video. And what she said is, you know, it's not what, when you do something, it's what you do afterwards that really counts. So we need to make sure that we don't continue to do the same thing, and we need to make sure that we improve in whatever we do, just in, being human beings. And that's all I really have to say tonight. Mr. Prey Bruno?
I actually-
Comments?
I actually had two with regards to the Parents Bill of Rights. I just wanted to point it out, point out lines nine through 11, which says that the foregoing policy supersedes all current practices and shall be deemed incorporated as if fully set forth in the student code of conduct, because I know there was a question about that, so. And then the other thing, I did get some emails with regards to the new safety and security that is being implemented. We, we do not discuss safety and security plans. However, I do want to make sure that the public knows that if they want to speak to a board member, they are welcome to set up an appointment face to face or a telephone or anything that, you know, makes sense for you and the board member.
Thank you. Dr. Savage?
Just one, one quick point. We do have the bathroom remodeled at Cypress Lake High School. It's on our approved projects list, and it's scheduled for actually for this year. So the speaker that brought that up just wanted to make sure they're aware of that. Maintenance is also going to be reaching out to the school to make sure it's the same bathrooms that were in question, and then someone will follow up with that student as well. At their request, Ms. Morgan mentioned a CNN report, but it's been reported on a number of news entities. There's really just generally a disparity between the Federal Department of Education and our state. And I would say it's not just the Florida DOE, it really is with a larger state apparatus, both the governor's office as well as with the legislature. And so there's just some discrepancies between the, the way that, what's being reported. So the quote specifically is Florida was allocated more than $7 billion as part of that funding to support students' health and safety and address their social, emotional, mental health and academic needs in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. On two-thirds of that allocation was released in March, but the remaining third, totaling more than $2.3 billion, has not yet been released because Florida failed to meet a June deadline for submitting its state plan, the letter explained. Now, the state also missed July and August submission timelines that were anticipated following conversations with the state, and this is a letter to Commissioner Corcoran. In a statement to CNN on Monday, the Florida Governor's Office said, quote, "At this time, no district has articulated a need for funding that cannot be met with currently available resources. Whenever this may, whenever this may change in the future, the state of Florida will coordinate with U.S. Department of Ed to ensure Florida students and educators have all the resources they need," end quote. Monday's letter also noted that Florida's Education Department has drawn down some of the American Rescue Plan funds at the state level but has not yet awarded funds to local agencies. So this really just try, this really goes into some detail to explain some of what we heard in the Ester briefing, and just really kind of highlights that there's some discrepancies in how the state is viewing these unrestricted federal funds. Certainly, our position as a district, and this is pretty much the entire state, is that these are funds that we're entitled to. They're just, it's, it's something that continues to evolve and we continue to work through that. But by no means are, is anyone in, from an educational standpoint advising that we don't need the funds that the federal government has set aside for us. I also will just say that Commissioner Corcoran, when he spoke to the superintendents, did say that, you know, we would take advantage of every dollar that is offered to us. So that was his position to the superintendents that he stated. So over, over a period of time. This is a multi-year award situation, so I don't anticipate that we'll have it resolved right away, but it's something that we'll continue to bring to the board as needed on that information. Anything else you wanted me to highlight on that particular piece? Next, just wanted to acknowledge that with the dramatic improvement in the COVID-19 transmissions, we're clearly moving briskly in a better direction. And so we're just asking that expert panel to transparently evaluate all of our mitigation efforts and assess their health benefit. The health benefits will be really determined by our health science experts, balanced against, for us, the educational logistical, really our practical, practical considerations for the best cost benefit. That's what our expert team is charged with doing, and that work begins tomorrow. Last but not least, just something on a very school-focused note. There have been a number of tragic circumstances at a number of our schools and sites, both some schools as well as some of our sites. You know, there's a few that I can just mention. Harons Marshall Elementary, Colonial Elementary, one of our transportation compounds, to name a few. Certainly in a district of our size, it's, it's unfortunately not rare that we do have fatalities and things of that nature. However, the frequency, you know, it's a fair litmus to say that our trauma support team that goes out and supports these sites gives us some indication of the frequency of this type of action. And we're seeing an increased level of trauma and traumatic events and crisis-level events in our schools. And so I just ask for everyone that we just continue to keep that at the forefront of everything we do and just, just really think about all the people out there that are going through such a difficult time, not just in the normal conditions, but then also taking and then dealing with loss and dealing with other traumatic incidents that have been happening. That's such a big piece. I just wanted to make sure I closed with that focus because it's been very heavy on my mind as well this week. Thank you.
Thank you. The next scheduled meetings of the board will be on Monday, October 18th. There will be a board workshop at 1:00 p.m. On Tuesday, October the 19th, there will be a board briefing at 1:00 p.m., followed by an action meeting at 6:00. At this point, having no other business to come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. And be safe.